Folks, uh, tonight I'll call the meeting, uh, the May, I'm sorry, the, uh, April, let me get to the right sound here, April tenth, planning board meeting to order. Uh, tonight, obviously, we are short staffed. We have, um, I'm the vice chair and, uh, we are missing our chairperson, uh, who has been replaced. Uh, Paul termed out in case, uh, you don't, you don't remember, Paul was our longtime chairperson and ran, uh, a tremendous, uh, he was a tremendous service to the town. He'll be missed. Paul, if you're out there listening, uh, you are, uh, will be sorely missed and, but we need to, we need to carry on and do our business. So for tonight, uh, I'm the vice chair, I'll run the meeting and we have two new members, to the board. We have, uh, BJ has been reappointed. Congratulations. Joe Pirk, welcome back.
Thank you.
And Charlie Valencourt. So welcome to the, uh, new returning members. Glad to have you all here. Um, in the interest of saying that, uh, our first item on our agenda is the election of officers and we do not have a full contingency tonight. Uh, both Leon Amaran and Art Weber are not available. So do we need a motion? Do we get a motion to table this to the next meeting?
No moves.
There's a motion to table the election of officers to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we'll move that to the next meeting, which is the, which is the May eighth meeting, correct? Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March thirteenth regular planning board meeting and a special meeting on March twenty seventh. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? We do these individually, Ron? Can do them individually. I'll, I'll accept a motion either way.
To accept the, uh, make, uh, the, the minutes from the last meeting?
March thirteenth meeting is, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion to accept the March thirteenth meeting minutes as written with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And we all have the regular, the special meeting of March twenty seventh. Is there a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Motion to accept the March twenty seventh special meeting minutes as written with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Very well. Next item on our agenda, correspondence. We have a memo from the town planner dated March eighteenth regarding an administrative subdivision approval for Timothy Barrow and Bote, Bote, Bote Allo LLC, properties located at two Wedgwood Drive and two sixty Valley Road, plat one one four lots four B and two fifty four. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm moved to receive.
Second.
You have a motion to receive the correspondence from the planner. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Pretty good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, item number four on our agenda tonight, agenda modifications. I don't have any, Ron, is there anything we need to know for? No agenda notifications. And then item number five in the old business, I have no old business. We have several new business items and we'll get to those now. First item of new business, item six A is a public hearing. Excuse me, the request of Oxbow Farms Realty Associates for a waiver from Design Standards Section five twenty-one two B two of the Middletown Rules and Regulations Regarding the Subdivision and Development of Land for Proposed Installation of Replacement Windows Not Meeting Design Requirements in an existing building located on Rogers Lane assesses plat one zero five lot two ninety-two. We have the applicant here. Thank you. Please, first, before we get going, this is a public hearing. We need to open the public hearing.
Motion to, uh, open the public.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, uh, Scott Bear on behalf of Oxbow Farms.
Ooh.
Have the members, uh, had the chance to review the letter of February ninth, uh, from Director of Property Management Kerry Corvino. Um, I think that letter kind of clearly states the reason we're requesting the waiver, um, over the last, uh, six years. It's gonna be six years. Uh, Oxbow Farms has renovated, uh, replaced the windows in four of their buildings already. Uh, and they were granted building permits. Apparently, maybe mistakenly, they were gonna building permits without, without having to come before the board. Um, but the windows that they replaced them with were the same that they took out and they did not have the, the, uh, the, the divisions in the windows. Uh, this year they applied for their, uh, building permit in order to replace the windows and it was denied based upon the divine standard. Um, and so we brought the, brought that to the attention of Mr. Lansky and during a, we had our pre, pre-meeting, pre-board, pre-planning board meeting, um. Does the board have any questions?
Some questions.
If I could just start by saying and just
Please, Ron, yeah.
For the benefit of the new members too, that, um, this would, uh, be coming in under development plan review as an application, except that in this case they're simply requesting a waiver from one of the design standards. So it's not gonna meet the thresholds for, for a full development plan review application. So you're simply requesting the request for the waiver from that particular design standard, which is for the divided light windows. Um, as the applicant just explained, they have replaced windows within the development over the past few years with these same windows that are being requested tonight. Um, they did not come to the board for the waiver at that time because there was a transition period between the prior building official and the current building official and the, um, this application basically fell through the cracks in terms of getting it flagged for needing that waiver. So that's why they, um, they weren't before you before, or essentially the same window that they're requesting tonight. Those windows, um, the windows that they're requesting tonight are, are the same windows that were previously, um, approved and permitted through the building department and have been installed.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
So on, on the map up there on the, uh, screen, uh, so which is the, uh, building you're referring to? Is it the one with the green oval or is it the one with the red square?
The one with the green oval.
Okay, okay. And the divine standard, you know, is, I'm not familiar with that. Was that, uh?
There's the standard saying that they have to have, the windows have to have the partitions in them or, or, uh, whether they be actual partitions or the, or the fake partitions. Instead of having a, a solid clear window, the partitions would be, you know, how they, they are, make a, make four, four little windows out of the big window, basically, or something like that.
So, but have you heard of the divine standard before? I mean,
I think that's type, yes. The design, designs.
Designs.
The design standard, yes. Okay.
Got it now. That makes sense.
Yeah, designed to divided light, uh, you know, and that hasn't been done, but, um, I don't know. I, I'm not generally too, too upset with it. Anybody else?
Well, so we're not talking about it. This is not a job that's been, uh, completed. This is about a, a new job?
That's correct. We're, we're replacing existing windows of the exact same type. Um, thanks before, uh, Oxbow consists of thirteen, yeah, thirteen separate housing buildings, um, and four of them have already been done. We're gonna be doing a fifth one and then they are budgeted to replace windows, one building each year going out for the next eight years, actually.
Got it. So I think Charlie, to be clear, uh, they, they had, the project had been done, a very similar project on the other buildings. The exact same thing and it just, as Ron said, it slipped through the cracks.
Yeah.
It happens. I mean, it's not, in my eyes, not that egregious. It, it happens. Um, you know, it's good that we're replacing windows. Uh, love to see the divided light, but you know, it is what it is.
Yeah. It's also important to note, uh, the area where the, where Oxbow Farms is, um, there's actually many buildings actually on, you know, adjacent to it on Main Street that actually had the same, same window design. So it's not, it, it's not going to stay, it's not like the, uh, these windows are gonna stand out from the buildings in the, in the area.
Just one final question, Ron. Um, this didn't meet the threshold for the new changes that we've recently done. This not, this could not be done administratively.
Right, exactly. Yeah, those haven't been adopted yet.
Have not been adopted. Okay, right. Okay, so good. Any other discussion?
I'm fine with this.
Yeah.
I think it's probably a good idea that these new windows match six hundred and twenty-eight that have recently been installed. That just seems like a, a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's why I feel.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a, uh, public hearing. Is there anybody in public would like to speak on this matter? Yes, please. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Terry Flynn, thirty-four Warren Avenue. Uh, just as a layperson, I'm looking at a thirteen building property and only four have been done with the more industrial looking windows. I think we have those design standards so that residences look more residential and homey and inviting if you think of it pictorially in your mind. Uh, so I guess, I, I think a minority of the whole have been done in one way and this is an opportunity to bring it up to the standards that we expect in Middletown and, and do the rest. That would be my, my input.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else have, have a comment from the public? Okay? And what's the pleasure of, of?
Close the.
We don't need to just, yeah, if, if anybody has a problem, we can, if you want to make a motion that way.
Are we gonna close the public meeting?
We can, if I don't, I don't have any of them. We can do that, we can.
I think the, uh, you know, there's been, uh, like this, there's been quite a few windows already replaced, you know, and, uh, I think it's, uh, it would be good to stay with that, what they, what, what it looks like now. I think they're pretty much on their way and to backtrack on that would, you know, certainly be, uh, a cost, uh, you know, it'd be a bad cost for the, uh, for the owner, but I, but I, but I still think it, it's, it's fine, you know, the way it is. So.
Yes. So I guess we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so, uh, what's the pleasure? Looking for a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the petition, uh, as presented.
Uh, a second? We have a motion to approve the, uh, request for a waiver as presented by the applicant. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda. Item six B, public hearing. Request of Wave Pond Hotel LLC for combined preliminary plan and final plan approval for a minor land development project, the construction of an eight-room hotel, pool and associated site work, and including request for waivers from certain design standards of the Middletown Rules and Regulations Regarding the Subdivision and Development of Land, Section five twenty-one. The application includes a request for a special use permit per sections six oh two and fourteen hundred, et cetera, of the zoning ordinance to allow the motel use in a limited business, traffic-sensitive and Atlantic Beach overlay district zoning district and variance from zoning ordinance sections six oh three and fourteen oh six to allow a westerly side yard setback of ten feet and an easterly side yard setback of nine point nine feet where thirteen point seven feet is required and lock coverage of thirty-six point three seven percent where thirty-two point seven five percent is permitted and variance from section thirteen oh six to provide eight parking spaces where twelve are required and a variance from section three zero zero two C one to allow front yards parking where prohibited and variance from section three zero zero two E two to allow landscape buffers of zero feet, two feet and four feet along the westerly, easterly and northerly property lines respectively where five feet is required. Property is located at thirty-eight Purgatory Road, assesses plat one one six northwest lot thirteen. So it is a public hearing? There are motion?
So moved.
Second, motion to open the public hearing in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, uh, we'll bring the applicant up. Obviously, Mr. Martland's here. Uh, this is just for the, just for our folks to know, maybe you'll say this to us, uh, Mr. Martland. Um, it's the first application we're seeing, I think, under the new, uh, guidelines of uh, unified review with, uh, as the planning board sees applications. We are now, as you heard me read into the record, the requirement to look at zoning regulations as well. So we have a lot to look at on this one, folks. So at, with that, I'll let you begin.
Uh, well, good evening. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here before you, uh, Mr. Nash and, uh, members of the board, David Martland on behalf of Wave Pond Hotel LLC. My client purchased, uh, this property along with, um, the adjacent, uh, Newport Beach, uh, hotel located on, uh, the corner of Wave and, um, and Purgatory, uh, uh, about a year ago. Uh, and at the time that they acquired, uh, the properties, um, this property had approval for a thirteen-room hotel. Presently, there were two cottages there. The, uh, since they've, uh, acquired the property, we extended that zoning relief. So that the zoning relief is still in place. It provided an opportunity to finalize the permitting with Coastal Resource Management, uh, as well as DEM for the hotel. So it's, it's got all full approvals for, uh, the thirteen-room hotel that had been, uh, previously approved. The opportunity, uh, during that time allowed my client to, uh, really think about the program, uh, that was being implemented, uh, and the design being implemented. And, uh, so they chose to engage with, um, ports and design to really look at that some more and see if they wanted to go in a bit of a different direction. And so they, over the course of, um, many months, uh, they did develop, uh, a new proposal, uh, which we've now submitted to you, which in a sense is seeking to revise what has been previously, uh, approved. I do have the, uh, previously approved architectural plans, if, uh, I may approach, just so you can have them for your information.
Mr. Martin, it feels like you have some extra copies in case anybody in the public would like to have a copy to follow along.
Uh, so as I was indicating, my, my client, uh, had the opportunity to sort of review that program and, uh, and think about redesigning it in a fashion that they thought was in, uh, more in keeping, uh, with the, with the neighborhood, uh, from a design standpoint. Um, previously, the, the other, um, project, as Spencer will, uh, indicate, uh, was essentially, uh, four stories, uh, with the, the rooftop pool and deck. Now it's being proposed to be substantially reduced, um, building footprint-wise, roughly cut in half and then moving the, the, the pool to the ground level and, um, and that's where the, the lot coverage variance, uh, where we get into that. Um, additionally, the small variance is being required for the, uh, the side yard setbacks result of how the, the, um, the room configurations are, which Spencer McCollum will, will testify to. So we've, uh, submitted this plan. You now sit as the, uh, the permitting authority for both development plan review, land development plan, as well as for the zoning relief being required. Hotels, or in this case, uh, motels in this district require a special use permit. Uh, so we are, we're seeking that as well as, um, waivers, um, for the types of materials being implemented. So we've got synthetic materials but are designed to, to replicate, uh, wood. We've got, um, less than the twenty-five percent, uh, landscape area. There is not landscape screening along, uh, the Wave Avenue frontage and in part, Lynn will testify about this, is because there is a significant, actually portion of, of, uh, area that is grassed, that's actually part of the, the public right-of-way. And this is something that had been discussed in the prior permitting as well. Uh, and, uh, we've got, um, a reduction in, in the buffers against both the, the common property as well as the, a, a small request on the, the flow side. The project itself has four units, but they're two bed units and they can have a lockout in them. So it's referred to as an eight unit because of that lockout. But you need one parking space for each one of those units. Um, and under the ordinance, they typically require four plus one per, per unit. There aren't gonna be any staff on site with respect to this. Um, staff are already, um, in the adjacent hotel. So we're requesting a, a variance related to that, uh, um, parking requirement. You're not supposed to have parking in the front yard under the new Atlantic Beach District. However, this property is, you know, essentially a through lot. So you've got, you know, you're on both Wave Avenue and Purgatory. So the, the parking's gonna be off of, of Wave Avenue, which I think is, yes.
Mike has a question.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the plans, you know, and it, it looks nice, but I mean, uh, it's not what we've had to review prior to this, you know, what we, what we had. It was something that looks totally different, you know, so, uh, a little surprising to see something so changed, you know, right here at the presentation, you know, so.
Yes, so that, that is the plan that is presently approved, that came through the process a few years ago and we, and my client currently has, uh, uh, the right to construct. So that is currently approved. What we're proposing is different.
We, we haven't, this wasn't on the, uh, website, you know, in the, in the packet, you know?
That's not part of the application.
That's just, that's just a, an example of what was approved.
What's on the website or what's, this is? What's on the website or what's, this is what, what are we looking at?
Looking at the application package. No, no, don't look at what he just handed out. That's not what's being.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Benton, but that, that is the hotel that was. Previously approved that my client presently has zoning permits and CRMC permits for. But they, they're proposing a different project, which is part of the application materials that you have.
Okay.
I have a question. So. Regarding this, this, this approval was back in what, twenty eighteen?
It was, yes.
What's the timeline on that?
So it was, it was back in twenty nineteen that it was, the decision was entered into. And that decision was then appealed. It was subsequently dismissed, the appeal. So then it had a year thereafter to pull building permits. This was during COVID. The Cohen Brothers who owned the property at the time got an extension of that to, to June of twenty twenty three. My clients acquired the property, I believe it was in March of twenty three. They filed for an extension of that till June twenty twenty four.
It's coming up in June.
Okay, right. So they've got to make a decision, either do that project, or if we can get permission to. With what's being proposed to do the revised project.
Mr. Martland, your extension went through zoning. It was a zoning extension, correct? Which the planning board actually went with it. That's what I thought. I remember that. Okay, you may continue, please.
Thank you. Well, I guess. What I would suggest is. That I call Spencer McCombe to testify concerning the architectural plans.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Please go ahead.
If, if Mr. McCombe could be sworn in for the record.
Is something that we've done in the past? Have we? We can accept, I mean, we've done, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think typically witnesses are sworn in at the zoning board. It's not something we do at the planning board, but because the planning board is sitting in a zoning capacity, I think it would be prudent. That the witness be sworn in to testify under oath.
That makes sense to me. Let's do that then. Very well, please raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name.
Spencer McCombe, architect for the project.
Very well.
Spencer, could you explain to the board what your involvement has been with respect to this property and the project?
Sure, we designed the initial building that was handed out as for reference of what property is current approved for. Reference that project is. Project is sixty percent larger than the one we're proposing, the building area. Quite a bit smaller building overall, just as a point of reference.
The new building.
The new building is one third the size of what's currently. The, so we worked with the initial owner of this property, worked through with this board and zoning to get that approved. The building property was sold, including the bar building on the far side away of Ave. The main Newport Beach hotels as well as with this parcel as well. So they're all kind of tied together under one ownership. They're under one housekeeping, under one check in desk. And so as we worked with this client for this property. Rooms were really just almost an addition to the, to the building. You can see in the floor plans, there's no check in desk, there's no foyer, there's no any really common spaces to speak of. Essentially enter into your room. They're looking at trying to maximize the green, that's the, you know, up and down in that area. So we really designed these very narrow rooms. Levels of them that are about as narrow as you can go. For sure, a little longer, but we've got four in there times two. So that drove the design of where we are, but just to give you a little heads up. About where we were on this. So the new owners really looked for a much smaller building to build. Much more pulled back from the front. The beach side. And really, instead of a pool on the roof, is now the pool is down low. So that eats up some of the lot coverage. But again, it's not a building, it's a low level. Pool area. That's raised a little bit. We have, we have water table issues here. So everything's built up a little bit. One of the challenges with the previous design was that. We had no place for the water, but now with a much smaller building and some raised elevations and a raised pool, we're able to do that.
And how, how wide are these rooms, Spencer?
They are. Thirteen feet wide. And so the depth of them. Thirty six. So you have a very narrow room, although it's a suite, it's, it's narrow. We're trying to give each, give each rooms a nice view. We're up one level. So we have FEMA compliant parking below. Other thing to be thinking about when we're talking about the parking needs of this building. We have one parking space per unit. Imagine this is not just this property, it's essentially spread across three buildings. So. Housekeeping and these other items that are added onto from our parking. Needs for a standalone building. Would need some extra spaces for staff. In this case, there really isn't an additional staffing parking need for this entire complex. Just happens to be its own lot. So we can take that into consideration about the parking request. Obviously, we fit as many as we could in here, but eight satisfied the number of keys in the building. And knowing that this is spread out across the big parking lot that's on the other side at Wave Ave attached to this property.
The. Did you want to walk through the, the elevations of what you're proposing?
Sure. You'll see what's changed quite dramatically from the previous proposal is that. The massing of this building is much more New England shaped and sized and scale. So we have gables that face the water. We have some dormers that are up top that are in a. Extra space, the third floor is essentially truss and mechanicals. I'm sorry, the top floor is. But you can see where the rooms lay out there and obviously we're needing to get up to that upper level. Cars are parked in the flood zone. Rooms are on the second and then third floor. And overall, it's a much more New England styled building, probably more in keeping with the standards.
And this, the, the north elevation here, this is what faces Wave Avenue, is that correct?
That's right. So this is, you're pulling up, you pull under the building or in front of the building, depending on your parking space and then. Go up those stairs that flank to the side to the four units on that lower level. Once inside those doors. You could either have a unit above and a unit below, or you could combine those if you had a, a two bedroom unit, which would connect those two. So it's like a lockout situation, but ultimately.
And Ron, if you could just move through and.
Yeah. So then on the water side, we'll have small balconies, allow someone to just step outside. They got a nice view out to the ocean from there. Down low, you'll see some lattice. This is the, this is the V zone area. It's actually not a V zone, but a flood zone. So that would allow water to come in and out. And then you have, you know, basically all eight units which have, you know, good, good sized glass there. But done in a New England setting with the pop out balcony that would just allow someone to stand out there. Very small, probably not even big enough for. Table and chairs or anything, but it's big enough to kind of stand out and take in the view.
Your, your office also prepared elevations of what this would look like, is that correct?
Yeah, we have renderings that show. Renderings that show if we could kind of keep going down the sides of the building. One looks at Flo's clam shack, the other one looks at the brick wall essentially of the neighboring hotel. But if we could kind of show here. So we have some 3D realistic renderings to kind of give you a sense of how this would, would look and feel in the property. So you get a sense of kind of what.
That would be the entrance off of.
This is Wave Ave, the Wave Ave side, parking at grade, obviously, and then the stairs getting up to each of the four units there. And we can see from the other side, this really shows you from the beach side. Kind of what, what we're talking about. We're going to have a raised area. That is a open area around the pool and then the pool is raised another three feet from that. There's some ramps. To get handicap accessibility up to that area, but really mostly a surface level pool to some extent. A much. Bigger transition from how it was present two and two years ago, or even the current situation where that was all massing of building there. So this is a. A much lower impact proposal in front of you.
And you're proposing pedestrian access on the, the front of that, is that correct?
That's right. There'll be a, a gate. It's obviously a, a pool area, but a gate that brings you into the facility. As guests would be coming. Out to the sidewalk and probably down to the beach or to neighboring restaurants. This is a way for people to walk in and out from that point.
Now, the lot itself, did it present you with any particular challenges in. Designing this in terms of the lot width or configuration?
Sure, it's a really difficult lot. It's got a high water table, it's fairly narrow. It's, it's sewn to be doing the things that we're doing here, but it's, it's long. It's long against the view. So if you're going to put. Rooms in here that want to look out to the view, the point of the whole thing is, is that you want to be the other way. The lot is long the other way. Difficult, as Lynn will tell you about the, the water drainage on this site. This proposal makes your life a lot easier. Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult site. It's narrow and we really tried to squeeze those rooms so narrow. So that we would, you know, setbacks as best we could.
Now, in, in reference to the previously approved plans, you've got. Renderings of those. And in the handout that I provided, those could be found at page A four point zero?
If you look at your packet, you can see the renderings of the previous scheme. Wanted to give you guys a sense of what really is ready to be built now, coming back with a much scaled down project. We think would be more harmonious with the, with the neighborhood.
If you could just elaborate, why, why do you believe as, as an architect that this, your, the current plan would be more harmonious with the neighborhood?
Well, it's, it's got more of the New England characteristic roof lines. It's got, it's a, it's a smaller footprint, so. Less impact on that smaller, narrow site. Leaves a lot of open space out to the public. Which obviously there's a lot more cars, if you will, from the front side than the Wave Ave. And I just think it, you know, ties in more with a typical middle town project, both commercial and residential. I can also throw out that we have chosen materials on the building that are New England inspired, but. I know we wanted to make sure we, we have the waiver for using materials that can withstand this actual. Location. So we're going to be using no full trim and, and shingles and clapboards, but they will be composite materials. And we want to make sure that's. Stand that and why we're doing that. In this case, this, these buildings take a tremendous beating.
I don't have any other further questions for Mr. McCombe.
Okay, thank you for that. How about from the board, any questions for Spencer?
Right now, I don't think so.
Mike?
On the grading and drainage plan, I was just wondering if you could explain some of the details, you know, of what's going on there. It's, I guess, sheet number C five.
Like, I think we're going to get some testimony from, from the site, from Lynn, I believe.
There's a civil engineer.
Yeah, there's.
Okay.
I think I never related to, to the, his testimony regarding the, the structure.
Okay.
We'll get to the site. I have questions as well, but.
Okay, and the, around the pool, that almost looks like a field stone wall around the pool. Is that what, is that what you're intending over there, you know?
So there's a couple of things around a public pool, well, any pool, you want to have, you don't want just people walking up there. Neighbors or so on. So we, we need some. It's a barrier between the public and the pool for safety reasons. Also, we are raising the grade in the, in the side of the building so that we can. Put the pool on the ground, but not in the ground. It's, looks like an at grade pool, but really we're, we're raising grade around it so that it feels that way, but. Is not dug into this water table, which is essentially hovering right around the grade line.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm just, when I'm, when I'm looking at that, that picture there, I'm looking at what, what's around the pool there. Looks like a field stone wall. Is that what you intend for that?
There's some stone retaining walls? Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, like for you, right? You know, these, I don't think you can put a field stone wall around a pool, you know?
Well, it's going to be a wall to raise it up to the right height for that upper terrace, which is essentially what's, what's around the pool deck.
I mean, it looks nice, but I mean, I don't think you can put a field stone wall around a pool that, you know, that doesn't make.
It'll be a concrete wall. It'll have a facing on it.
It's just a face of.
veneer, veneer.
I think they were talking about this. Is that what, it, it also in the front there, you know, we're bordering on Aquinic Avenue, there's a wall there too. Is, is that, is that what it's intended to look at, look like, that concrete wall there?
Concrete wall next to the, you mean the front one?
Yeah, the one that's on the sidewalk there, yeah.
That one right now is planned to be a concrete wall, a retaining wall that is against the concrete sidewalk.
Why not put some veneer on that too, you know, make it look, you know, like the rest of the walls on Aquinic Avenue.
It wasn't in our proposal, but.
I mean, I think that was asked for by the tree commission. They, they suggested it also, so.
We could certainly provide that that would be wrapped in a, in a field stone veneer.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was agreeing with Mike. I think that a New England stone. Wall look would be much better, even if it's a face of a New England stone. I, I remember I had a battle, people about the Atlantic Beach Club when they were, wanted to put up some pink stone that was from Cranston. And I wanted the natural stone. and I wanted the natural stone coming into, you know, in and out of, of Middletown there, right, right, I guess, almost across the street. So I would agree myself. I think that that would be feeling important.
That's a point well taken.
EJ?
The tree commission did say that they would hope a facing of natural stone would be considered as there are stone walls in the area and are an important feature throughout all of Middletown. So that is from the tree commission itself.
And, and we're happy to provide that.
I let them know.
Anything else, PJ?
No, I, one of my big concerns happens to be about the potential in that whole area of flooding. And I'm certain you've taken care of that by the positioning of the rooms above the parking area. But how about the, the rest of the problems that might arise from flooding? How is that going to be taken care of?
I can have Lynn Small address those issues.
Yeah, I think we'll let her testify, but we'll stay with Spencer for Mr. McComb for a sec. Those are good questions though, for sure. Because, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
So all the entrances, all the units are, are private entrances? I mean, there's, there's no like one area where they, both units go into? I mean, they all have their own stairwell? You know what I mean?
Yeah, they, so they, if, if we go back over to the facade facing. There you go. So.
Yeah, it's, I think it's like A1.0. That's, that's one of the.
So there are four two-bedroom units. They each have an entrance. And there's an option to lock out one of the units where they can go through their own doorway.
Charlie, go ahead. While we're on the natural stone discussion, regarding this message that we have from pre-commission, they did bring up, in addition to that, something about the, they wanted to be sure that the plants survive that, that are replaced. Let's see, what, what did she say? They're requesting that a guarantee is in place for any plantings that don't survive, that they're going to be replaced. But you, I think you have a landscape plan here, don't you? Did you present one?
Yes, there, there is a landscape plan. That is correct.
And, and something about two oaks that are planned on Wave Avenue and something about wires. How will that be addressed?
So I, I do know that the, I did speak to the landscape architect and those oaks, she is not concerned about. She indicates that at maturity, they're only proposed to, they're only like six feet wide. And so they can be placed such that she doesn't believe that they would interfere with any wires.
Okay, and she'll, she'll take this note, notice into?
Yes, and, and she, she would revise the plan and place a note that they should be field located by the landscape architect. I'm all set.
Joe?
Spencer, where, where are the mechanical systems located for these four units, four two-bedroom units?
We'll have the, the upper level, the roof line is fully open, so we're going to, okay.
So on that upper level?
Roof.
In the, oh, okay.
That's almost.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's enclosed, so you won't see any mechanical.
And we would be doing a disservice to our former chair if we go anywhere near that.
All right, so that was one question. My second question really is, is to Mr. Martland is, so there's eight parking spaces, but it's all under the same ownership with the surrounding hospitality? So just in theory, if there was somebody like, like three cars for one of these units, they could co-mingle parking with the shared ownership? Or, you know, like if the parking gets tight on this?
So I, I, in theory, they could. However, I think they limit the number of parking or number of cars that they're, they're allowed because they're still, you've got a limited number of parking.
Understood, all right.
I could ask Mr. Jacoby.
You need to swear him as well?
Everyone will need to be swear.
Okay. So please, Mr. Jacoby, raise your right hand and, and repeat after me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Nick Jacoby, I represent the ownership.
Get that?
As, as far as the parking, basically, yeah. Obviously, we have all the adjacent properties and we utilize that accordingly. That, that being said, the variance, it kind of, the variance is basically if we get rid of the lockout, we need eight spots. So it's basically, it doesn't change the number of parks and the number of beds, regardless if we have the lockouts or not. So, I mean, saying that we have the neighboring property, obviously, yes, we, and we would limit number of cars per beds. But at the end of the day, I mean, if we were to eliminate the lockout, we wouldn't technically need the variance.
I'm, yeah, I'm not sure of that. I, I wouldn't subscribe to that. I would think that, although I support it, I, I would think that the ordinance is clear. You need, and it's a separate space. Unless, I mean, the, the other thing I was going to go towards is some type of a, an understanding or, or an agreement between, although it's under the same ownership, I'd like to see some type of a, an agreement to share the, the parking. But, but I, but I would still disagree that you don't need the variance. I think the, the ordinance is clear that you need.
No, I'm not stating that we don't need the variance.
If you, if you, if you, you did, if you, if you, if you didn't use the lockout.
Eliminate the lockout, so there's no variance.
If, if, if I could just.
Sure.
Because I've, I've had these conversations with Mr. Costa and Mr. Walansky, indicated you need one space per unit. And if it was, if there was no lockout, you would only need four spots plus four for staff. Because there's a lockout, it bumps it up to 12 spots. But we don't think there's going to be any additional need for parking.
Yeah, okay, and I understand your reasoning, and I would.
And, and if we, we could certainly enter into a stipulation or agreement that there, there could be a shared parking facilities between the, the properties.
Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I think any kind of agreement like that, I, I, I don't know how much sense it makes. I, I think the petition, you know, the, the request is a request. Zoning goes with the land. That, those kind of agreements are, they tend, they tend to disappear. I, I think I'd rather address what's in front of us regarding zoning, the request for the zoning, and we.
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I think, you know, it's got to stand on its merits of, do they meet this, do they meet the standards for the relief requested? And we can talk about that. But I think having an agreement in place, admittedly, is hard to police and hard to enforce, and they tend to disappear, but at least it's in place. But again, the merits of, of it and the standards, I think are, are the important factor. But I'm prepared to listen to that as well.
Well, I don't think we were talking about a separate agreement. I was thinking more in terms of a, a condition.
A condition of the.
Of, of an approval, yeah, which doesn't disappear.
Well, okay.
But what good is that is, you know, five years from now, the hotel's still there, the use is still there, and the ownership somehow changes.
Yeah.
The, the condition is still in place and has to be dealt with.
Very difficult to do.
And so I, I'd be inclined to, I mean, like, that, that's where I was going to go is that, you know, who knows where the ownership goes down the road? But there's, I'd like to see a, an agreement in place as a, an agreement as a condition to share, frankly, the, the, the required spaces over and above what the zoning is, may or may not grant you tonight or, or for this petition. So I think, and we can talk more about it as we get closer, but I think just keep that on your radar as we go forward. Any other questions for, for Spencer first, or we'll, we'll get back to you, but I do have a couple of questions for Spencer, unless anyone. Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll go, that's a good, good, those are some other items we will go into. So Spencer, of course, I lost my place here, my bad. Oh, there they are. So thank you for, first off, thank you for addressing the, the need for a waiver, some testimony regarding the materials. That's the one waiver, I think, that you have purview over tonight. And, and just for, for our knowledge, as I referenced earlier tonight, the design regs that are being proposed to be changed, this would fall under that, I think, at some point. That was the, the idea. You do need a waiver, let's be clear on that. And, and I support that for the record. But future applications like this, assuming that the regulations pass through the council and the ordinance and the rules and regs, waivers as such will, will be standard, be done administratively going forward. But thank you for putting the testimony on the record. I did have a question on the, we talked a little bit about the pass-throughs, and I understand, I see the, the four or eight units referencing, is, is the pass-through, point me to where that is on the plan? Because I, I think I, I think I'm, you know, it's eight units potentially, but it could be 12. Where are those 12? Where do you get the 12?
It's, it's.
I'm sorry.
Four units, and it, and it could be eight.
Could be eight, so, so then my question is, on the second floor, it almost looks like there's a pass-through door between the two middle units. What is that?
So we're calling the first floor the elevated first living space.
Right.
So you come to a deck here.
Yeah.
You have two doors, one going into each of these four units.
Yeah.
And then there's two doors, as soon as you walk into it, a vestibule, if you will.
Yeah, I got that.
You have a door that goes upstairs, and then a door that continues on, so those could be closed off. So two, two guests, two parties could be.
I got that, but my, thank you for that. But my question is, is on the second floor, on the, I guess, on the upper floor, the two middle units? It looks like there's, on the, on the, on the parting wall between the two units there, it looks like there's a, potentially a door or some, or maybe that's a mirror. I don't know. That's not a door.
Not a door.
That's what I was looking for. Okay, so I don't have any other questions for Spencer, but I, some of it relates to the site work that I think we all probably have questions on. Anything else for Spencer? Okay, thank you, Mr. McComb.
Thank you. If I can call Lynn Small, please?
Please, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers, Sixth Valley Road.
Thank you.
Lynn, how long have you been an engineer?
I had my 26-year anniversary at Northeast Engineers, April 1st this year.
And you've testified before this board and many other boards?
Yes, I have.
I would ask that, should we be recognized as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
Do I have an issue with that? I don't, I certainly don't. Be free to proceed.
Thank you. Lynn, could you explain what your role has been with respect to this project?
Sure. My office was originally retained in 2015 with the previous owners. We've done all of the land surveying, site testing, and civil engineering for the project thus far.
And what are the existing site conditions like?
So the site runs from Aquinic Ave through to Wave Ave, it's adjacent to Flo's and next to the hotel on the side. There are two very small cottages towards the Wave Ave side of the property. They have cesspools, one of which is located on town property. The other one is right in front of the building, right next to the property line with the town. We do have town water and electricity. They're pretty rundown cottages right now. The remainder of the property between the cottages and Aquinic Ave is basically on. While not very well kept, it's, it's a grass area. If you look at the topography of the property, you'll see that it's, the lawn areas are rather of a depression. So a lot of the runoff that we get onto this property doesn't always drain off. It eventually drains into the ground. And that has been what's made this project under the approval that we have already. And then again, with this redesign, a bit of a challenge from a drainage standpoint.
The property is essentially almost like a bowl.
It's almost, yeah, like a low spot.
And, and what are the water tables here?
So probably as a result of having all the water just seep into the ground, the water tables are ranging from 12 to 18 inches on the side based on the testsels that we did. And then we even monitored them for a short period.
And so you were involved in the, the prior design and the, of the currently approved hotel, correct?
Yes.
And that required you to obtain not just zoning approval, but also approval from DEM and, and CRMC?
Yes, we went to CRMC, we had, or the ascent that was issued for that property. And then, of course, went through the full process at the town, which included special use permit, planning board advisory opinion, on yards, TRCs. So it was reviewed pretty thoroughly by several different departments.
And you have an approved, fully approved drainage plan, is that right?
We do.
And that, that prior approval was for essentially 13 units?
Yep, 13 hotel units with the underground, you know, the parking was under the building.
And the proposed project is being reduced to a scope of eight units?
Correct.
Are there any other particular features of the, the site as it exists that you think are unique?
Yes, one particularly difficult piece of this project, which we'll get into a little bit more detail as we go through, is this property line along Wave Avenue. The property line is right here, but the edge of the roadway is probably 15 to 20 feet away. So you have this very large space outside of the curb line of the road before you actually enter into the project site.
And, and you're referring to the existing conditions plan? Is that right?
The existing conditions plan, sheet three, yes.
And roughly how much space is, is there?
I believe it measures between 10, 15 feet. It's not uniform. The road first, right there.
Are there any other, you know, features that posed, you know, constraints to meeting any of the zoning and planning requirements?
Well, we have, the site's a little bit difficult because it's, it's long and it's not uniformly long. It narrows down as you get towards Wave Ave, whereas it's wider as you're, you're on Aquinic Ave. So the frontage on Aquinic is a little bit longer than what you have on Wave Avenue. One of the other things that we wanted to take into consideration when we were doing the layout of the project was the proximity of the buildings that are on either side. You have Flo's, which is on the east side, and they have exterior decking. And then you have this, the hotel that's on the other side, which is very close to its property line. So construction-wise and just overwhelming, you don't want. So construction wise and, um, just overwhelming, you don't want a building too, too tall next to Flo's, in my opinion, which is what we have currently approved now.
If we could go to sheet, uh, C4, please. Uh, Lynn, does this, um, C4 show the proposed layout?
Yes, sheet C4 shows the proposed layout of the building. Um, we identify how the parking in the lower level garage will work and then the parking that extends outside the building footprint. And then we locate, we, um, identify the patio areas that'll be between the building and Aquinic Ave, um, as well as the pool area with the decking.
Could you, um, maybe approach, uh, the monitor and, uh, show where the, uh, the, the building footprint is?
The building footprint is this darker gray hatched area. We have five parking spaces fitted inside or underneath the building footprint. You can see the stairways, um, that extend Wave Ave side of that building and then again on the, um, Aquinic Ave side of the building.
And are there additional parking spaces, um, off of the driveway?
We do. We have additional parking space in exterior to the building footprint, um, as well as a dumpster area. Those will be located on the Wave Ave side of the building, um, in an exterior parking area.
And would it be fair to say the, the variance request for the proximity to the, the property lines is necessitated by the, um, the lack of width of the lot while you're trying to provide, um, two-way traffic?
Yes, I mean, we want to make sure that we meet the criteria for 90-degree parking, um, with two-way traffic. That's a 24-foot aisle width that forces those parking spaces to get closer to the property lines. That is a direct result of the pro, fact that the property narrows as you get towards Wave Ave.
And you've, as you look at the, the building footprint, you, you have that set all the way back to essentially the backside of the Flo's building?
Yes, so this is the Flo's building that you can see, um, this is scaled in from aerial photographs. So it's plus or minus from the photo cell. Um, but we did line up the building towards the rear of that so they wouldn't be overwhelming each other.
And in the, the, on the purgatory side, can you, uh, walk through and point out the, uh, the improvements that are being proposed?
Sure. Um, the purgatory side of the building, we have the stairways that come down. We also offer a walking path that's along the side of the building. This also gives some between our new building and the adjacent hotel. This will give us some space for construction and maintenance of actually both buildings. Um, these are paper system, which will come down and it wraps around the pool area so that we can have some areas for patrons to sit and sunbathe. Um, we, and then we go into our elevated decking, which is just wooden decking type design with open slats so that the stormwater will drain right through it with, um, a pool within the decking. So that is all elevated up.
And when you say elevated, uh, how, how, how high above grade?
I believe it's approximately three or four.
Did you say three or four feet, did I hear? Yes. So still fairly low?
Yes, yes.
What's the depth of the pool?
I don't have a design of the pool right now. We just put in a footprint.
They're gonna go below the ground level?
It will be an in-ground pool, yes.
And if you heard the questioning for Mr. McComb, I think there was significant questions and concerns potentially over, um, how stormwater drainage is, uh, being handled. Could you, uh, discuss that?
Yes, the stormwater design might be better shown on, I think it's sheet five of this set. All of these little boxes, um, on this plan are basically infiltrated. Um, we have pre-treatment, I mean, water quality treatments through, the root filters will be captured into some sand filters that are shown at the rear of the building. These systems then drain into this storage system that we have that basically takes up the entirety of the property that's not taken up by footprint of the building or the pool. Um, we were able to, because we lifted patio area and the pool area up, we were able to get some groundwater infiltration and recharge in the area that is between the hotel and Aquinic Ave. Um, so, so we're able to recharge some of that stormwater. On the, on the Wave Ave side of the building, you'll see a very similar structure. This one is lined. The, and that is because we can't lift this system up high enough to provide suitable separation from what we learned is the water table here. So you want to protect that, um, interaction by putting in a polyliner. This system provides an enormous amount of storage so that we can offset the peak runoff and slowly discharge the water through the catch basin system that drains out, um, to the bowl. That's north of the site. So we have been able to effectively met the requirement for groundwater recharge and met the requirement for peak runoff. But as you can see, the whole site, if it's not a building or a pool, is a drainage system. And that is very similar to how it was under the last project, although the, the last project was all pervious pavement under parking garage, but underneath that was a full infiltration system as well. This property is one of the most difficult. While it is small, it's one of the most difficult to try to meet those criteria.
And has this been reviewed by any, uh, agencies?
This, we have not been able to go to the state yet because the state requires that we get the planning board approval before we can go to the CRMC for that modification of the permit that they have. Um, but it has been reviewed by, um, the towns engineer, um, Crossman. They had a couple, um, recommendations that are included as stipulations of, uh, this particular there. We don't expect any issues at the state level because we mimicked the same type of, um, approval conditions that they had asked us to do with, well, it's currently permitted through them.
Now, um, with respect to what you've designed, uh, do you anticipate that there would be any, um, negative, uh, impacts to any of the budding properties?
No, the, um, two directions that the stormwater runs from this site, and there's a small area that runs towards Aquinic Ave. We've reduced runoff to that direction. Um, oh, we actually did go to DOT with that permit. So I'm sorry, when I said we only get the town approval, we do have the DOT permit as well. Um, and then, uh, the other receiving design point is Wave Ave, uh, which we also reduced the peak. Direction as well.
And so it complies with all, uh, the, the state and local guidelines?
Yes.
The, the, you don't believe that there would be any, um, negative impact on, on traffic or parking in the neighborhood as a result of this?
I do not. Um, this project proposes a reduction in the density of the one that's currently permitted. Um, so we'll have a reduction in usage. Not only that, the project that's currently permitted had a lobby, so it would have staff on site. So that's actually a higher density than just the occupants and the units. This is, I think by definition, considered a motel because it doesn't actually have a lobby. You're either in a unit or you're not, you know, so you wouldn't have, my experience using hotels, I don't have cleaning staff in there while I'm in there, you know, so that kind of usage is off on opposite timelines. So that's why I don't think that parking requirement, which allows parking for staff, is necessarily applicable for this particular proposal.
Now, you've put a, a number of parking spots under the building, correct?
Correct.
And there are only three that are outside, uh, of the building? Yeah, the. So.
Sorry about that. Yes, three.
So we've, you, we've, um, kind of limited and tried to, um, make as minimal as possible the, the variance request for the, uh, number of parking spaces in the Wave Avenue front yard.
Correct.
And there's no parking the other side of the building, obviously.
Correct.
In the purgatory front yard. Now, from a, a lot coverage standpoint, the, the building footprint of this proposal has been substantially reduced over the, the prior approval?
Yes, um, the building here is approximately 30% of what was currently, um, previously approved. But part of that lot coverage includes the decking and the, um, pool, which actually adds to the lot coverage calculation for this particular.
Previously, the, the, the lot coverage was the 35% under the prior approval?
Under the prior approval, the zoning allowance for up to 35% lot coverage.
And now with the substandard lot, we're prohibited 32.75%?
Correct. The town has changed the lot coverage allowance for this lot since that approval was issued. I believe it's down to 25%, but because this lot is substandard and says it doesn't have as much land area as required, the new, um, zoning allowance is correct for that and has increased the allowable lot coverage up to 32%.
But, uh, we, we're seeking 36.37%?
36.37, yes.
Um, so, um, and, and that is because of taking the, you know, essentially a pool off the top of the building and putting in that grade?
Putting in that grade and then we had to provide that, um, ramp to get up to it because we lifted everything on that side of the building so that we could provide a better drainage system for the project, which had to be subsurface.
Ron, could you pull up the, uh, landscape plan? Uh, Lynn, you worked with, um, Pam Rogers, you know, Pamela Rogers from Verde, um, in, um, coordinating the landscape plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Could you just sort of briefly, um, point out the highlights of, uh, the landscape plan?
Sure. Um, we tried to buffer the property that you, so a large portion of the property is your, your patio area, um, which butts up against this, this, uh, brick hotel building. That's a few. Um, so the primary focus of putting in plantings was to put it on the areas where we get some better sunlight. So we put it on the, um, side which abuts Flo's property and then out along the front on Aquinic Ave, you know. Um, actually, one of the features that we wanted to bring your attention to, which kind of shows up a little bit better on Pam's plan, is this huge difference between the pavement and the actual project site. We managed, or we worked with the town, um, Department of Public Utilities, I mean, uh, Public Works, so that we can actually do street trees within that town's right-of-way so that it softens the edge of the roadway versus trying to hold all those, um, all those trees in the project site, which the public wouldn't benefit. You wouldn't help your, your tree. I guess you would call that. Um, so what we have is a couple of trees that are, end up in the town property, which the developer will be maintaining. Um, but we made sure all of the improvements for the project are within our property line.
Yeah, Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, just a question about the, the, uh, street trees and the wires. Are there any electrical wires? How, how is that going to be handled?
That is, there are electric wires that I understand and, um, we've talked to Pam. She's looked at the notes that the tree commission came up with. She does believe that it will, um, be okay with the type of plant that she proposed in that area, but she did, she is adding to her plan that those trees will be placed based on her recommendation on-site. So she'll have to come out to place them, um, when they're planted to make sure they don't interfere with the wires.
Okay, and that will be part of the agreement?
That will be part of the appro, the final, yes.
Thank you.
Lynn, was, was there a, you know, a manhole cover on Wave Avenue there that belonged, uh, that, that you were gonna look into to see whether it's actually active or it's inactive at this point?
So there's, there, the cesspool for the cottage that is closest to the hotel that exists is in the town property, yes.
Oh.
That still exists. It will be, uh, removed as part of this project.
Wasn't, wasn't there a, a, a cover there, you know?
Yeah, that's the cover that used to.
Okay.
I think it was the cover in the tank, I think.
Concrete, yeah.
Um, when you were referencing those, uh, street trees being placed in that, uh, that, actually in the public right-of-way, that's actually what is, uh, necessitated the waiver request on, uh, related to the street trees?
Correct.
Because we don't get to count them because they're not on the project site. But it works out to be, um, and by placing them in the right-of-way, they has a, a better effect than them being street trees.
Correct, yeah.
Who maintains that lawn area or in the trees out in front of, out, out on the, uh, public, uh, property there?
That'll end up being maintained by the developer.
Okay.
I mean, that's in front of, you know, the main entrance to the building. So they'll end up cutting the grass and making sure those trees kept.
Would it be fair to say that the uniqueness of, of this lot in terms of its configuration, size, width, has, uh, necessitated the, the requested variance, variances for buffering and parking?
Absolutely, yes.
I don't think I have any further questions for Lynn.
Yeah, thank you. So before we ask questions of the board, I'd like, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Martlin and Ms. Small to go through, you started to go through some of the, uh, landscaping waiver requests.
Yes.
I'd like you to identify, first of all, the one you mentioned about the trees. Is one, two, what, there's five of, five of these? You can just maybe touch on each of them and give us some, some reasons why we need the waiver.
Now, we, as, the project has a waiver for green space for less than 25% of the land area. Um, that is because we are, um, while we're reducing the building that was previously approved, we do have, um, the patio area that surrounds the, um, area. And we're not able to take credit for the green space that ends between the front property line and the roadway, even though that's kind of part of the project, but legally not. Um, but that green space ends up not technically being counted in our 25%, but feeling like it will be maintained like it. but feeling like it will be maintained like it. You know, the town streetscape will benefit from it, so that's why we have that waiver.
Additionally, you're proposing underground drainage and infiltration, is that right?
That, that's a good point, is the drainage system, as you saw when we looked at that plan, takes up the entirety of the area underneath the pavers and patio area. So if we reduce that by putting more plantings in those spaces, we would have to take out those drainage features. So, and, I mean, we feel that the benefit, the better, the bigger benefit for the town is that we provide more stormwater provisions for this site. And like I said, having that space between the property line and Wave Ave kind of addresses that technical deficiency.
Yeah, a question related to this one, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I'm curious, have you planned any use of, of, I know that your ability to use the soil in places as a result of the pool and the water table and so forth, and the size of the lot is very restrictive. Were you planning any planters?
I imagine that we will have some planters on the patio areas, just to soften that. Pavers areas.
Yeah.
But that hasn't been accounted for in our calculations for green space. You know, that's just gonna be an added benefit that the developer has to soften that feel of the paver yard.
Yeah, it would have been nice to see the, see them in the plan because you can actually make them part of the building, but that would definitely help.
And, you know, I mean, I don't think that they would be opposed to showing them, but sometimes when you put it on the plan, it ends up being kind of part of the permit and they might want to shift them around a little bit, and we don't want to end up being in some sort of violation. So they will be having planters, we just, and they will probably be in like individual, you know, not buckets, but pots, I guess.
I do like the idea. Planters. To offset the...
That's how they do a lot of their buildings, you know, they're not just pots, they're actually built-in line planters. And they, they have a nice effect around pool areas and stuff like that.
And I understand what you're saying there on actual built-in planters, but that might affect the infiltration through pavers. The patio area is pervious and infiltrates into our drainage system. So we might not want that kind of feature on this project site, but the individual...
They usually se, they, they, they usually lined and separately, just, you know, have a frame, but that's okay, I'm just talking too much.
No, not at all, I think, in fact, I was gonna bring that up. I think that addresses item two, or waiver two requested, but I, I'm inclined to find some compromise in a condition that is going to require some, some planters as part of a final approval. So we'll, we'll talk about that, but I think that addresses number two. Do you want to continue with the others?
Sure.
So we don't have a landscape screening feature along Wave Ave. I think we've addressed that, that the landscaping that we provided is technically offsite, so we don't get to any credit for it. The other thing to consider is we have the signage there, the entrance there, and that piece of property is really now, so there's not even a lot to do in that area. We have done some screening where we could, but it is limited.
D1, a landscape buffer, at least ten feet along all property lines, buffer only five feet on Easterly.
That's the space between the project site and the adjacent hotel?
No, I think it's...
No, it's close.
I mean, again, that area of the site has been pinched because we have tried to maximize our stormwater system. It, the entirety of the site that's outside of the paver patio area, which is kind of just over the drainage system, is included in the landscaping.
You, you can't put landscaping over that drainage system, correct?
No, you can't.
Okay. And you, you needed the system of, of that size for this project, correct?
Correct, to meet the state and town requirements for your peak runoff and also to get some groundwater recharge, we needed the entirety of that system.
But we can do planters. Sounds fair, okay. That's four, right?
That was...
Yeah.
Requested for, waiver four, yeah.
The buffer between the building and the parking?
Yeah, the, the design of the project actually has the building with the decking that, that lends you directly onto the patio area. So we don't have a lot of landscaping in that area between the building and the patio area. Again, on the front side of the building or the back, depending, the Wave Ave side of the building, that's where we have the parking areas are adjacent to the building. Pam was able to incorporate some green space in there, but it's not enough to meet that full ten-foot perimeter around entirety of the building. And it's a very tight site to try to fit all of those firemen in.
And then, number six, the deciduous trees?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the deciduous street trees. Those are the ones that are being provided in the public right-of-way as opposed to on-site. The oak trees on Wave Avenue.
Any questions for Ms. Small? Like, yeah, go ahead.
So, just wondering, like, you know, in the TRC requirements, number three, I was just wondering how you interpreted that, you know, it says, "Stormwater management plans shall be revised to include buoyancy calculations for the line's stormwater structures and calculations to demonstrate that stormwater will discharge from the system within twenty-four hours of the end of a storm, subject to the engineer's approval." So when you say, doesn't it depend on the size of the storm, you know, or the, you know, when you design the system, you know, the discharge from the system shall occur within forty-eight hours from, from the end of the storm? Is that from the end of a hundred-year storm or a fifty-year storm or?
Well, we have specific design storms that were required to meet. Middletown actually has more than many towns. I believe it's the one, two, and twenty-five, and a hundred. Most, most towns now only do the one-ten and a hundred. But for those storms, we have to demonstrate that the drainage system will drain. That's just a matter of printing out a chart that demonstrates that so that the town engineer can review it. The buoyancy calculations is just so that, under a flood situation, tanks don't pop out of the ground. We do buoyancy calculations all the time for septic tanks. So this is just a matter of applying that same technology to the drainage features. And basically, you just weight it down. If it, if it's going to be buoyant and pop out of the ground, you just weight it down on concrete or whatever, so that it doesn't...
If there is a storm surge and it comes into that area, you know, and the place floods, the tanks won't pop out of the ground then, right?
Yeah, it's really in between that storm. So if the whole place is flooded, the water's gonna hold it down, right? But it's that in-between time while it's flooding that you end up getting the water from underneath pushing the stuff out of there.
And, and they often look at those calculations, particularly not just with septic tanks, but even like for gas stations.
Correct.
Make sure that they're tied down so those, those type of things don't happen. So it's, it's pretty common.
Yep.
I have one more question. Go ahead.
So, so the stormwater requirements, I believe, are that the runoff from the, after the development cannot be greater than it was before the development, right?
Correct.
So before the development, you basically had an open lot there and everything just sort of sat on the, the ground and...
There is some runoff, as well as extremely, there is some runoff. So that, that's our saving grace. Otherwise, you...
And so, so, so after the development, there won't be any?
Correct.
Any increases in runoff, right? There won't be any increase in runoff?
Only increase.
Can you show where the runoff will go?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
From the different sections of the site?
Well, there's a watershed plan that's included in the stormwater design. It basically shows that a small portion of the site that's on Equinix Ave, very small, drains this direction. Get from the topography, it's just a very small piece. It's like, everything else either infiltrates or drains off in this direction towards Wave Avenue after, you know, certain elevation or site. What we're doing is allowing some to drain towards Equinix, although it's less than what goes today. And then majority of the storage system, well, the entirety of the storage system distracts towards Wave Ave, but, but it's offsetting that difference that we're, you know, that's sheet flowing off the site towards Equinix Ave.
So you...
You have an overall reduction.
So you take a portion of that stormwater and infiltrate it in the system around the pool area, is that right?
Yeah, so underneath this paver system is an entire infiltration system that will infiltrate into Boils Bene. On, on the Wave Ave side of the building, because we can't lift up the site, we have to drive into the property, so you can't lift up the site three feet to get that separation from the water table. So that side of the system is lined. So that's literally like putting a tank in the ground, it's lined, it's not going out. It's temporarily there. We meter the outfall by the pipes that are coming out of the system. It's modeled through Project Cat, so that we can determine how fast it's coming out.
Pump required there? Do you have to pump it out, or these?
No, it drains by gravity.
Okay.
I'll send Mike?
Yep.
Anybody, DJ?
Yeah, as a site civil expert, I'm, I, I look at it kind of black and white, Lynn, and I would say today, the site is, if you had to give it a grade, what would, zero to one? It's like, what? Just in terms of stormwater management of it, of site, right? So it's like a zero?
Yes, everything just sheet flows, and from an environmental standpoint, this site is, is not really great. It has no provisions for stormwater. It has cesspools on town property. You know, the two cottages are usable, but they're a bit dilapidated, you know? So this will propose an improvement aesthetically, functionally, and environmentally for the town.
Well, that's where I was going, environmentally. So if you had to give this one a grade after it's developed environmentally, what would you say it is? I mean, it looks like sophisticated system to me.
Extremely sophisticated. If, if you would say that a ten was a hundred percent compliance with the code, then this is a ten, you know? And under existing conditions, I would say it was like a, if we give it some credit because it does infiltrate, doesn't bother the topography, we would say...
Next question, the landscaping, is it irrigated? Will it be irrigated?
Might have to ask the owner for that.
Okay.
I know they're gonna want to keep the plants alive.
No, those are my questions.
Yes, it is.
Any else? I, I have a couple, couple of questions and a comment, just to go back to Joe's question here. There is actually a slight slope to the property, exists, that slope, I guess, wave to Equinix.
Very end of the site slopes towards Equinix, but most of the site slopes towards wave.
Ah, okay.
But it's a depression and then it slopes.
Right, right.
So you end up with like a blue pond.
I understand. So, the, the relation of the building to the adjacent building, and there's a, there's a fire lane there or a walkway, did we call it ten feet? Or did, what was the, I mean, the, the rendering and the elevations don't necessarily show accurately, but I guess the bigger question is, is the fire department at TRC had a chance to look at it and, and, and believe that that's adequate? Is, and, and of course, the, the code official was there and he saw that there were no code-related issues with regards to firewalls being in such an adjacent building, so it's...
It's fully compliant with the fire. Fire department didn't have any comments for the project from a site standpoint. They'll probably review it when they go to building permit stage, interior firewalls.
Of course, of course, but I was more concerned about the lane and just made a note, if I recall, on the previous application, that was, that was a, a comment from the previous fire review.
That's, you have a good memory, you're right. When we had the previous project, because that building was so long front to back, we had a challenge with pedestrian, like a certain length, and I, I don't know all of it, but there's a certain length that you're supposed to be able to walk from the door to get outside the building footprint. And the last design of the building, because it was so long and narrow, was difficult to meet that criteria.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we even, there even had to be like almost a wooden walkway over some of the drainage features to accommodate for that.
You also testified regarding your approvals, you do have a DOT approval for...
Do have a DOT approval. The only permit left to get after town approval is CRMC, and that's because they require that we get your approval.
Zoning first.
Before we go back for that CRMC modification. We do have the ascent for the current project, though.
Right, right. And then I, I had a question on the, the need for variance. It's, isn't, and it's confusing because even though I do this, I've done this much of my life, I still question the calculations on, I understand the reduction because of lot size. It's undersized, so you get a reduction. Is there, isn't there a percentage that allows them to, to do a consent approval with less than five percent? And isn't lot coverage, it looks like there's showing less than five percent?
There, it, it is true that under the new legislation that was passed in 2023, that there's a provision to apply for a modification if the variance you're requesting is under five percent, what would otherwise be allowed? They can request a modification administratively, and then the administrative office can make a decision as to whether it's appropriate to grant it administratively or to otherwise have it come before the board. I'm not familiar with the particular request that the applicant may or may not have made.
Well, the, there's a variance request for lot coverage from thirty-six point three seven percent where thirty-two point seven five is permitted. Not a math major, but I think that's less than five percent.
Well, yeah, you, you make a lot of sense, and you're absolutely right. That would typically be a very easy approval for, for them just to go see the building inspector. But this is a little more complex, so I'm sure that Mr. Martlin would just put it all together and...
Agreed, so I, I'd be wanting to, look, and I support it because of the, where the, where the rules are, but they're asking for it, so I have no problem keeping it. I don't, in the, in the interest of not moving it, but I just wanted to clarify in my mind that...
They would still need to request it as either a modification, but there's nothing wrong with it being heard as a formal request for a variance.
Just wanted to be clear on that, thank you, thank you. Yes, you know, I initially was looking at, as we were going through the, the site plan and the pool, I was, you know, the, I guess, you know, the infiltration is, is necessary, and you testified, and I support that it, it, the, the ability to control and contain the, the stormwater far outweighs, or at least outweighs, the, the need for landscaping or, you know, in a perfect world, grass in that front area, but I, I see the, the need for it. But I do like Charlie's suggestion relative to some planters, so I'd like to find a compromise, maybe you can think about it a bit, and some type of a condition to require X amount... and, uh, some type of a condition to require X amount of it. I'm not, I don't think we want to tell you where to put it, although I think as part of the, the waiver request on 10 feet on the easterly side, I think if we can agree to put some planters, you know, on the easterly side, I think that would, uh, at least satisfy the intent of a buffer, and we'd get at least some greenery there. So ma- maybe we can go back and think about what some type of a planter arrangement would be. So I'll leave that there for a second. And I guess that's my last, kind of generally, Lynn, is, so, when you do, when you were doing the design for this, for this project, the one that's being proposed now, you did new testing, new calculations, obviously. How much of the old three, four-year-old, five-year-old, uh, calculations did you use? Were they updated, was, was it all on?
The thing was updated, we couldn't, this is a completely different project. The only thing we were able to salvage that we already did was existing conditions.
Okay.
That analysis still worked. Um, the new developer actually had us monitor the water table to see if maybe the, normally, as you probably know, when you do soil evaluations, you're reading the redox features in the soil painting you get from how high. We wanted to check how accurate that was. So they actually had us monitor it. So we did put pipes in, um, the ground, and we read them, and the results were basically accurate.
So is it safe to say then, um, I mean, look, I, I mean, the, the, the previous project, and I remember this pretty well, it was, it was a large project. I, I know I supported it, um, but I'm glad to see the reduction. And I, I guess is it fair to say that the, the drainage system that was going to be used for this, for the, for the previous project was a rather large, very expensive system? And the one that's being proposed now is what?
Still large and expensive. The benefit is-
I just want you to tell me this.
Just the nature of the project. Um, for what it's worth, we did have the developer check to make sure it wasn't gonna be a deal breaker, so that we're not all wasting our time here getting this permit, and then they can't make the numbers work to build it. Um, but the difference, and I don't know how much you remember of the previous project, but we had that landscape buffer around the perimeter, but it was a drainage system. So it was gonna be full of water, you know, every time it rained. We just planted it. So this, you actually have plantings, and the drainage system, you know, was all contained, a little bit easier to maintain. I think it'll look a lot better, um, and it certainly is a better building, in my opinion.
Okay, so, uh, so then, then I'm finished, other than, other than commenting that, as of now, to this point, the requested waivers have, have been addressed, and we've addressed, I mean, it's relative to, uh, y- your testimony, zoning relief needed. I think ties in at least number five relative to landscape buffers. Um, but the need for parking relief has already been testified to. Uh, front, yeah, parking is different. But I'm, I'm satisfied at this point with, with the testimony, so thank you, I'm good. Anybody else?
All good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I could ask James Houle?
I'm using, I'm using this one.
Uh, please raise your right hand and test, and repeat after me. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please, and, uh, your name and address for the record.
James A. Houle, H-O-U-L-E, 198 Union Street, Portsmouth.
Mr. Houle, can you, uh, please just briefly explain your, uh, your background and credentials?
Uh, been in the real estate industry in Newport County since September 1973. I've done just about everything that I've testified in front of this board on many occasions, testified, uh, pretty consistently throughout the state in terms of planning, zoning, um, in front of city councils, town councils throughout the state. Um, and I'm a certified general appraiser, and have been since they've had certification for appraisers. And I have been a licensed real estate broker since 73.
I'm gonna ask that, Mr. Houle, we recognize as an expert in the field of the real estate appraisal and consulting.
Mr. Houle, I have no issue with that, board members. Very well.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Uh, Mr. Houle, could you, um, briefly explain your connection and involvement with respect to the development of this property?
Sure, I was originally called in to testify when, and for the project, when it was being developed in the, in the iteration that is now currently approved. So I was very familiar with it and what had been requested at the time. Looking at it again now, uh, I was asked to look specifically at the, um, the special use permit that is required, and the dimensional variances, the variances that are required. I didn't really deal very much with the waivers. I felt that they were really answered well by the architect and by Lynn Smalling, engineer. Um, so I really concentrated most of my effort on, um, what were the zoning issues involved here? Because that's more my bailiwick anyway. So I looked specifically, we have a need for a special use permit in the LB zone for this use, it is a legal use. Uh, when, I, I, sort of to back up, I, when I looked at these, I not only looked at these standards in terms of their application today and how they conform, but I looked at them in terms of the comparison to what we had already had approved and what was going to be built on the site. So a lot of the, um, a lot of my sort of thinking has been somewhat shaded by the fact that, uh, I know this is a far less intense use of the property. And, um, you know, even though years have gone by, and it's become the drainage and issues along that line have become much more sensitive, I think they're really doing a better job handling it. So, um, I, I am looking at it in terms of the comparison between the two. But specifically in terms of the special use permit, just to, not to bore everybody to tears, but I did look at it in terms of the standards for the special use permit that's being requested. Uh, it will not result in any significant diminution of property values in the surrounding area. I, I really don't believe it will. It's a very harmonious use with the area. It's a use that's already been approved in the area. So I, there's no particular impact, uh, that within the project that's going to have any negative impact to any of the surrounding properties. Uh, it will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood. I certainly don't feel it will. Drainage was unhandled. Uh, this is a, a really poor utilization. The current utilization of the two cottages that have been there for decades is really not only an ineffective use of the site, but it's not really a very attractive use of the site. So I think that in point of fact, the new use will be much more attractive than what's there. Uh, the granting of the special use permit will not be detrimental, substantially injure the appropriate use. Again, I, it, it is very harmonious with the use, so it certainly won't, uh, do any, have any negative impact. The granting of the special use permit will not result in hazardous conditions, uh, especially relating to public health, safety, or welfare. I think those issues have all been addressed by, really by the engineer. And, and I think this is a much better, uh, plan than, than what it, certainly what is on site now, and, and better than what has been approved. Um, that the use will comply with the following criteria, subject to the category of development standards. Uh, when we look at the development standards, the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and also consistent with the zoning ordinance. Um, those are really, in my mind, joined together. Um, the comprehensive, it, first of all, it's a legal use, albeit with a special use permit. But the, um, comprehensive community plan, when it comes to, uh, in, when it comes to development of commercial properties, they don't want infringement outside of the commercial areas. And they emphasize the use of infill lots. This is really a perfect example of an infill lot. I mean, it's really a perfect example of an infill lot. So it's, and, and certainly the upgrading, uh, is very consistent with what we expect from the comprehensive land use plan. And again, it does conform to the zoning. Uh, there's no significant, uh, environmental impact. I think that Lynn Small addressed that. The subdivision, uh, as proposed, will not result in the cre- creation of individual lots. That doesn't really apply. And the, the, uh, proposed land developments in all subdivision lots shall have adequate frontage and access to streets, which they, it does. Um, actually, that dovetails into a lot of the requests for the variance. Uh, it has almost too much street frontage because it's a, it's a through lot. So you have frontage on both sides of the property. When I look at the, um, required findings for the variance, the hardship is clearly tied to the shape of the lot, the size of the lot, and the fact that it has frontage on both streets, uh, Wade Avenue and Aquinic Avenue. Uh, really is, as it's been described, a very difficult lot to use on, on all levels, uh, which I think is why it's taken so long, uh, for somebody to actually have a good plan for development, uh, and actually maybe want to bring it to fruition. Um, that the hardship is certainly not the makings of the, um, current owners of the property. That the granting of the special variance will not alter the general character. I consider it very much in-character with the neighborhood. It will not have any impact to alter the character. Uh, the zoning board shall, uh, which is you in this case, uh, shall require that, uh, evidence be put in the record that by granting any dimensional variance, the hardship suffered by the owner, uh, if it is not granted, uh, would amount to more than any inconvenience, mere inconvenience. But they have added the language "to be minimal" to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use. And I think you've heard a lot of testimony that this is a really low-impact, low-density type use. And I think that any of the variances is really very harmonious with, um, what we, um, would expect in this situation for a minimal variance. And so I think that's really about it.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Houle.
Anybody? No?
Um, have you looked at the, uh, tax consequences? Kind of what's there today and versus, you know, commercial real estate taxes and room taxes and-
I didn't.
What the upside and benefit that could be to the town of Middle Hill?
I'm really sorry that I didn't, because it's a very valid point. Um, they're requiring, um, right now, the property is generating a very small amount of tax revenue. With the rooms that are there, you know, this will generate, uh, in assessment, just in assessment alone, I would expect it to be into the millions. And, and now, if you add on room tax and all the other things. The other thing that I think is really important about it is that irrespective of what the thought pattern is about the preponderance of hotels, we still need a lot of hotel rooms in this area. And I've noticed that over the, um, last, what I read in the industry journals is that there has been a reduction of use of a lot of the short-term private rentals, and people are going back to using hotels. They find them to be more consistent and safer, and a number of other issues along that line. So I think it's very important that we add in as many hotel rooms, certainly in an area that is just perfect for a hotel to be, very close to the beach, among other hotels, within walking distance of a lot of services.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Uh? Jim, did you address-
Sorry.
I noticed you addressed the, um, dimensional variance and mere inconvenience. Did you mention, uh, the grant, granting of the use and how it relates to, um, a structure, uh, or land that, uh, cannot yield any other beneficial use?
Oh, I think that that refers to a use variance.
Okay.
Okay, and we're not, definitely not talking a use variance, since this is a legal use in the zone.
Okay, great, beautiful, thank you.
Probably, I think that language in there is boilerplate language to guide, to guide us. Yeah, it doesn't, it's not applicable to this particular application.
That's correct, it's inapplicable.
I'm good, anybody else? Mr. Houle, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any further witnesses.
So, I, I do have a couple of questions.
Do you want to open it up to the public, or do you want to go through the discussion relative to the planters?
So, uh, I, I do have, I'm sorry, I, I'd like Ms. Small to come back up. There's one question I, I just wanted to comment on to be clear. And if you don't mind, please, thank you. Um, relative to the, I'm trying to pull it up on my computer here. So the elevations, and the, I, I just wanted to be clear. I mean, we, we talked about this at the very beginning, and kind of close it out at the end of your discussion relative to the pool. Uh, and the, um, you know, the, the, and Joe mentioned, and it made me think again, it's gonna be, it's going to be a waiting pool. Um, I, but I guess, seriously, the, that elevation of that pool is going to, the, the drainage and the, uh, those calculations haven't been done yet. And I'm, I want to avoid, you know, this nice, pretty picture we see in front of us, that pool being out of the ground more than it needs to be to get a four, even a three-foot or a four-foot pool. I, I know, you know, it gets to the point where it gets, uh, ridiculous, but obviously you've done enough work to get it to the point of there's going to be a pool there. But I just wanted to note that, uh, two things, that the, much of the fencing, if you will, is, um, clear. It, I'm assuming those are, those are safety glass panels, those are, they're not open. Uh, those are, those are-
Along, are you asking along the front?
The front, and also, there's also, if you look on the elevation of the pool-
Eight, three point two.
There you go.
Eight, three point two.
I'm assuming all those are, you know, glass, where you can see right through. So, you know, as you're driving down the road, you can see those, that pretty landscaping that is there, and it's, and then, you know, if we're talking about a wall, looking at the wall, uh, it will all kind of blend nicely. One more up?
Couple more, couple more.
Upper morgue.
There we go, that one.
The panels there, those are, those are glass panels, or safety glass panels, correct. As, and the same up on the pool deck itself, if you go back to the last, very last one, the next one down, there you go, like that. That's, so all of that is, I mean, I know things change during, during design, but that to me is a, an acceptable look. And I, I wanted to, along with the, along with the fencing that's there, the, it looks like wrought iron, uh, aluminum wrought iron look fence. I want to make sure that we maintain all of that. But note that there is a, you know, there'll, there'll be some elevation issues, I think, you know, on the front of this, this infinity pool effect, where that wall is, based on the elevation and access to the pool. So it's, in other words, you're leaving the building down into the, a walking area, uh, where, you know, and then a paver area, and then up to the pool deck. Right, that's, that's what's represented here. And I just wanted, wanted to note that, number one, let's make sure we maintain all of the wrought iron looking elevations along with the see-through panels, and that, uh, you know, we do the best we can to keep that a low-profile pool as depicted on the drawing.
Yes, we can do that. We would have to come back, honestly, we would have to come back to you if we were gonna change, um, the elevation of the pool, because it would elongate the ADA ramp, which qualifies as lot coverage. Um, so-
That's good, then. So I think, you know, as we, as we look at what this application is about, you know, preliminary and final, we have some conditions that I think we, we were looking to do. And I do want to ask the public for some input, but I guess I'll ask the board. Do you want, do you want to go, do you want to go through some of the conditions, potential conditions? Or do you want to hear from the public?
I think we'll hear from the public and get the condition.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh, anybody from- Uh, anybody from the public would like to speak, please step forward. And we, we don't need to swear the, uh.
Yes, you do. Yes.
We do. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that clarification.
I'm swearing now?
I, I won't swear at you. I'll, I'll swear you in then.
Wow, you have before, so.
Please, uh, uh, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Valerie Galb, 94 Short Drive. Um, what's the exact height of the building? Is it forty-five foot?
Uh, I, I would defer to the applicant on that. Do, do you have a series of questions or do, can we?
Yeah, I've got a series of questions.
Why don't we do that and you can take some notes and we'll let you come back up and answer them afterward.
Okay. And if it's forty-five foot, explain why the differential in the thirty-five foot. Um, and where exactly is the right of way? Um, there's other rights of way in the community where a right of way is open to the public, where if you go back to the prior picture, the right of way is all blocked off by shrubbery. Where a right of way is access to the public, even if it's a small space. We live on a right of way. We're not allowed to put any trees on it, plantings.
I think you're referring to the Wave Avenue area.
That's why I want to know it. No, I thought, um, Ms. Small said it was the front area by.
Right now it's private property and I don't know if there's any quote right of way. There certainly is a, a right of way on the, call it a right of way, it's, it's town property.
Wave Avenue.
In the Wave Avenue, I don't believe there's any, any, I'll let the applicant speak to that. But I, my, my interpretation is it's private property and there is, um, you know, a, a, a town property, uh, right of way for road and.
Right, in the back.
That's, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to.
No, there was a piece of property in the front.
Okay. Well, I'll let them speak to that when they, when they come up.
Um, and then in the parking, now this has been discussed over and over at other zoning planning board meetings, where the parking is supposed to be attributed to the lot or the property that the project is on. And so by supposedly borrowing space, the other four spaces from other properties, if they ever sold this property, then now they're down four parking spots. In addition, um, could you let us know about the parking status of their other two properties? Because the brick building doesn't have any parking. Everything is pushed to their back one. And so the status of each of those, because they could have variances already. And then, um, the main thing is there's a dichotomy. Ms. Small stated this is a completely different project, brand new project. Mr. Martlin said this is merely a revision. We were given materials from two thousand eighteen, when in fact this is a whole new building. Um, so I'm not sure if that opens up the way for an appeal, um, since it wasn't stated as a new project, but has been stated as a revision. Um, and one of the ways to get the landscaping on this other side of the building against the big red brick wall is to possibly make the pool smaller. And then you'd be able to fit all that in. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Martlin, if you can come up and address those.
I, I think it might be most productive to hear from all of the members of the public and then to have Mr. Martlin come up to give kind of rebuttal at the end, if there are further members of the public that wish to speak.
Yeah.
Would be the most efficient way.
Well, thank you.
Good evening. Oh, Terry Flynn, thirty-four Warren Avenue.
Actually, you need to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Terry Flynn, thirty-four Warren Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to, um, give some inputs that are neither in favor or opposed to this project. Uh, I, I did want to mention that as the planning board knows and, and the new members will find out that part of the comprehensive plan includes the Atlantic Beach Master Plan, which I, I think that Mr. Hool should include the next time he's assessing areas down there. And it's well worth a read to get a good sense as to the vision for that area. And along those same lines that we now have an Atlantic Beach District overlay. It's a zoning overlay for that area that really should also be reviewed when considering this project and, and other projects in the area. I was noting that although this is a far less use of the property than, than the prior project that was proposed, the statement that the, any additional cars down there will have no negative impact does not seem viable, given the already existing traffic challenges down in that area. Anybody who is local knows that. I'm not going to say anything further on that. Um, I am a little concerned about the landscaping issue, especially on the west side near the brick building. Zero shouldn't be acceptable, um, you know, whether it's reduce the pool or, you know, uh, even if it's a foot, you know, they have one-foot gardens that exist where you, you grow things, you know, up. Uh, especially since they're different lots. This whole thing with, you know, shared owners in contiguous lots, sharing parking. Thinking long-term, I think it was, um, Mr. Valencourt mentioned it, uh, and Mr. Nash, that you have to treat it as if it was going to be separated at some point in time. Because if ownership changes, then you're, you've passed on a problem or you've created a problem, a, a new problem that was not intended, unintended consequences. And again, with a, a tight sight to get all the requirements in that line makes, should make anybody think, well, is it the right package? Thank you very much for your evening.
Thank you for your comments. And is there anybody else that has to, would like to speak for, in a favor or opposed to this or just comments in general? No further discussion. Okay. I'm, I'm going to leave the public hearing open for some discussion in case we have other questions. I want to give them a chance to respond to some of the stuff I, we might have to say so. Anybody have any questions initially? Want to bring Mr. Martlin back up and?
Yeah, and I, and I, and I may have a question for Mr. Martlin.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's what I want to keep it open for.
Right. I'll do my best to address these, uh, first being, uh, there was a question about the height of the building pursuant to, um, how the height of buildings is measured, the height of the building is thirty-five feet. Now, because you're in the flood zone, you measure from the base flood elevation, plus you can have five feet of freeboard and you're thirty-five feet on top, on top of that. What the town did to counteract that, um, a few, a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, um, the, the height of structures was permitted to be forty feet. You knocked it down to thirty-five feet. So you've, you know, you've essentially eliminated the, the freeboard component, um, in, in terms of overall height. So from a building perspective, a zoning perspective, the height of the buildings, thirty-five feet, no variances are being requested.
And, 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 and you're measuring from, uh, not existing grade, but, uh, something else?
From the base flood elevation.
In the flood zone, that's what happens. Yeah.
Um, there was a question about the right of way area. Um, if, um, so the, the, the walkway down this portion, um, of the buildings is not the, the right of way. If, Ron, if you could bring up the landscape plan, because I think it shows it best. The, uh, the right of way that, uh, Ms. Small was referring to before is the Wave Avenue right of way. Um, and it's, it's an oddly configured right of way. You have the existing, uh, building of the hotel and sidewalk that comes out this far on the abutting property and then the right of way just there. And you've got this property line set well back of the, the curb line on Wave Avenue. And so that's where we were taking advantage of placing the, the street trees. So they lined the existing, uh, street area. So these areas are landscaped. We can't take credit for them. But that's all grass around the trees, uh, maintained, uh, in that fashion.
Go ahead, Joe. Yeah. So just to be clear, that's public, that's the town of Middletown land on the Wave Avenue side.
That is correct.
And the developer is responsible for landscaping it and maintaining it.
That is correct.
It's a good deal for the town.
I get, you know.
And, uh, um, Mr. Martlin, the walkway is private property for the benefit of the owner and the hotel users. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, there's, um, we've chosen to provide a, a walkway against, uh, the building edge, much like a sidewalk. Um, that's generally permitted in the design regulations. Uh, it's under common ownership. The, you know, I know, um, the, the board was struggling with the, uh, the landscape, um, waiver a bit. And as a way to try to help, um, ameliorate that, I was thinking, um, something along the lines of maybe providing five percent of the patio area to be dedicated to, uh, toward planters. Um, so that they could be, they could be placed, uh, a- around there in a fashion that doesn't impact the, uh, the drainage system.
Yeah. And I think what you're getting to is, you know, the, the walkway, right? Where another comment relative to having, I mean, it, it, it's a, it's, it's a big wall, right? And I don't know what you can do there. I'd love to see some plantings there, but I, I mean, it, it's, the wall is forty feet high. And I, I don't know, absence of, you know, I, I don't know what else can be done there. I mean, shrubberies are, would be great, but it's not really going to do anything for me.
No, and there, there's also a concern about, you know, if you plant that stuff right up against the, the, a brick wall, you know, it, it can get into the grout and you, you've got real maintenance issues with respect to that. Uh, you know, they've spent a lot of time trying to re-point, uh, the, the brick, uh, well, even the, uh, the Cohen brothers when they owned it. Um, but, but it's a, it's continual maintenance associated with that.
I mean, so that said, and in light of our discussion on planters, I mean, maybe we're talking an awful lot of planters here, but I mean, five percent seems, I don't know what that calculation is, but I, I'd like to see a, a more concerted effort to do some substantial planter landscaping, at least in my eyes, to, to, to do just that. I mean, they can be moved, you can maintain it, and it, I think it satisfies the best of our ability, both. That's just me. I'll see what everybody else thinks.
Well, I, I was, uh, my thought was that there's a substantial compromise on, on, uh, ring on stone walls versus concrete. Um, so you're saying five percent of, of what exactly?
Um, I wa, I was saying five percent of the patio area to be, to have planters.
Which patio area means what?
Okay, uh, uh, if I can just approach off.
I, I have, I have a challenge.
Okay. Yeah, no. You just pulled five percent out of the sky then.
So then, this is the patio area.
I see. Okay.
Crosshatched area right here.
Most visible from Aquinic.
Okay. So let's, let's kind of leave that for some discussion afterwards. Let's, you can continue with the, I guess, addressing the comments.
Yeah, um.
You have another question?
Okay. I think the only, the question I did have, and I don't know if you've answered this question, uh, from the, uh, the members that got up and had questions regarding the revision, uh, the application revision. It, it's my understanding this is a new, a new application. Is that?
That's correct. This is a new application.
Yeah, okay.
And advertised as a new application. I merely said during my presentation, we've got this approval. I filed this new application, but it's sort of like a modification. We didn't file a modification, application or anything like that.
Okay.
File the new, under the new zoning guidelines, land development, uh, plan approval, the, the zoning, um.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, we answered the question that was raised.
Yes, and, and the, the planning department, you know, noticed it in that fashion as well.
I, I, I would just say, and I was going to say later, but I'll say now, I think, I think they've made a substantial concession on, they have an existing approval. Uh, if this doesn't, if they pull this, pull this tomorrow, or if we, they don't get an approval, they can come back and revisit that plan.
And, and Mr. Nash, I would just, uh, caution you that the standard before the board is what's in the memo. Um, and while it's, it's important color that they have an existing approval, the standard they have to meet is independent, um, of what was there previously.
Understood. I, I just.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't, I, obviously I don't disagree. I think you're absolutely right. And I, I, it's just like the parking issue. I, I only focus on what's, what the request and application is in front of me. And this other stuff, as far as I'm concerned, is, is, is part of the sales process. I don't even think about it. Um, so I get it.
Okay, Mr. Martlin, continue. Anything else?
I, I don't think there are any, uh, particular other points I.
Hang on. We'll, we'll, we'll go again.
If, if I could ask.
If you.
Um, the, you know, I know that there's, there's additional parking on the other property. Um, we're comfortable saying that, you know, folks of this property can utilize parking across the street. But the variance obviously is requested for, for this property. We're providing eight spots where, um, twelve are required. You know, one, one per unit plus four, which would be, you know, usually dedicated for staff. There are no staff here, so that, that's the basis of the request.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I still think I'm, I'm heading in the direction of an, of an agreement. Uh, I, I, and I, and, and so, so I support the variance request for, uh, for the parking. But, but I'm, it's helping me knowing that there's other options that are, would assist that. And, and the coverage of, i- if there's a sale down the road and, and this property becomes, uh, becomes, uh, a, a new owner, uh, then it, then, then it wouldn't have those spaces. So I'd feel better with an agreement.
And a condition. And, and I, and I understand that. It, it makes perfect sense. And, you know, an operator of, of this use too, um, you know, wants to make sure their guests have parking spaces. You, you can't, you know, rent out, um, a unit and not provide parking. Like you, um, there's, there's no available really parking in, in the area. Um, there's no street parking. So you, you do have to accommodate and provide for that parking, um, as, as a business owner. And you want to make sure you, you do so, um, just from your own personal business perspective.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, no, other than, uh, you know, I don't know how to quite address the, the planter, uh, discussion.
Okay, we can tou, touch on that in a second.
Okay.
Another question? On up. We, we don't need to swear her in again, do we?
Uh, no, she continues to be under oath.
My question on parking once again.
My question on parking once again is that the Red Brick Hotel and the hotel behind it on Wave uses parking on Wave Avenue. How many spaces are there for those two properties? And what's the excess that could even possibly accommodate these four extra spaces? In addition, all of us know from a legal perspective is that if it's not written in the deed, any agreement isn't necessarily going to matter if they sell this property.
That's fair. I think we'll address that unless you have a response. Let's do that.
Yeah. One, I don't have a parking survey for the existing parking across Wave Avenue. All I could tell you is, you know, historically, my recollection is that obviously where the second hotel that the Coens built was, was a parking area. Prior to that, you had the, the brick building that had at one point the greenhouse restaurant in it. That was, you know, a heavily used restaurant. They, when they built the new structure, I do recall that they had sufficient parking for, for both uses with that. But that, that was back, that's gotta be close to 30 years ago. 25.
More than.
Yeah. So I.
Okay.
Aside from a condition in the deed, a condition in a zoning and planning decision does run with the property. So it attaches to the property and remains with the property and is sent, in a sense, is tied to the deed from a legal perspective.
It is. Personally, I, I still don't like the idea because you would be asking me to make a decision on a variance request subject to the abutting property or the another property owned by the petitioner granting parking relief. And as the president had indicated, on requested was, do we have any kind of survey as to how many spaces there are? I don't want to get into that. I think that personally, I would prefer to vote on the request before, as I don't really have a problem with the parking. I think that generally, I honestly think the proposal is a, is a reasonable proposal. And if, if they weren't able to meet the requirements of parking, they're gonna have to hire somebody to, to bring their cars elsewhere to park. That's what they do in, in most cities, you know?
Yeah, well, maybe that could be part of the agreement if need be. I mean, maybe we're speculating far beyond what, what the issue is, but to be clear, I support the variance as well for parking, but I, I think there's a, there's a, we can, we can protect future owners by doing this. And then if it ends up for discussion under, under potential sale, that discussion, there's an agreement in place, they're gonna have to address it in some fashion. So I think it's just further protection, but I still support the variance based on the merits of the standards that are in place today, so.
I have a question for Mr. Martland. I'm looking at the C4 layout and utility plan and you know, I'm just thinking out loud in terms of, I'm looking at the parking spaces underneath the building and those don't look like compact car spaces to me. They look pretty generous, as well as the spaces in the lot on the Wave Avenue side. And it's not uncommon, as you know, to look at different sized parking spaces. Oftentimes, eight turns into 10. And, you know, you whittle, whittle away at the, whatever you're lacking, right? So, you know, I look at the plan and I, I see pool equipment room. Could that go somewhere else? I don't know. Dumpster enclosure, could that go somewhere else? There's a couple of spaces, you know what I mean? There's ways to look at it. I'm sure you guys have looked at it, but I'm just, again, trying to be sensitive to the the public comment and, and coming up with a solution. That's fair.
I think I would need Lynn, Lynn to comment to the, the layout and, and how that that was accomplished, where the, you know, I'm sure the peers are supporting the structure, impact.
Yeah, no, no, no. I get it.
Not sure you're permitted compact spaces on a parking lot of less than 50? Or I forget.
As far as I know, the town doesn't allow compact spaces at all. I don't think we have a standard for that. It's a standard number. It's not compact.
Okay. BJ, yes, please.
Thank you. I'm looking at this in a slightly different way. I believe the Atlantic Beach area, the problem, had been brought up and I am very interested in things that fit into the Atlantic Beach area as designed and by people, what, three, four years ago, when, when this was discussed. I am, however, in favor of what I'm hearing about this new structure there. And I think it's, it would be a, a good addition. And I would, for the tree commission, say a plus for, for the planters that you like, Bill, because they certainly would make a big difference. But I am very concerned about that Atlantic Beach area and the problems of congestion. But I do like what I'm seeing with this project.
Mr. Chairman, if, if the board has moved to discussion, it may be appropriate to close the public hearing and, and if, if, if public comment is closed.
I'm fine with that. I just, so that's a good point. I mean, here, I mean, before we close it, I, I'll say that, you know, this application is requesting both preliminary and final approval. Based on our discussion with regards to the potential condition for a parking agreement and some planters, I'm not so sure if I'm comfortable doing final at this time. I certainly would, would like to entertain some discussion on the preliminary, but I, I feel like I, I'd like to have them come back with a final a final plan for planters and the, and the agreement and some review. That's how I feel. But, and if, if we feel like we might go that way, then we can close public hearing and move towards preliminary at this point, but we need to keep it open, I think, for discussion if, if you all feel like you want to look at final as well.
Close the public hearing. You vote on the preliminary plan and then they would have to come back for final.
That's kind of what I, that was my, would be my proposal to the board, but I, I'd like to have.
Did I, what would we be voting for actually?
So they're asking for preliminary and final. So we give that, if we give with it, we.
If you agree to the preliminary, is that what you suggested?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so obviously if we give them preliminary and final approval, then they don't come back to us. It's an administrative final. Well, I'd prefer to have them come back for final and present to us what, what they've come up with, a better parking arrangement and some planter arrangements at a final plan. No, no, I mean, that's how I feel, but if you all, do you want to go for final and give them? I don't have a problem with that. So go ahead. You want to say something on that?
Yeah, if I could, because we're running up against a, a deadline and my client either has to seek the, the building permits for what's in place and move forward on that, or proceed with this. And that's sort of why we asked for both the preliminary and the final, because the timing is so difficult.
But I mean, the timing is such that they have until June, right, to, to get this. I mean, I don't see why this can't happen next month.
The, well, we've got to finalize the, the balance of the construction drawings in order to get those filed with the building inspector, so.
Have to do that anyway, and part of that is, is I mean, you have to do that one way or another, whether you get a final or not. It's just an appearance. But I'm looking for parking and planters.
Planters, let's try to be you're, you're, you're hoping for a rough or a final design. Show, show me where the planters are going.
Yeah.
And, and the size of them. Okay, and then what do you mean regarding parking?
Well, so I, I'm, I'm looking for a condition.
Okay.
That there's a parking agreement in place and I, I'd like to have at least a look at it to make sure it's, or at least have our, have the solicitor look at it.
Okay, and I think that we, we probably have to understand that that, you know, that probably won't survive the current owners. Yeah, hard to take it after that, to try to even enforce it when somebody
Yeah, I still think, I mean, it's, it's, like I said at the beginning, this is a lot of relief they're asking for, a lot of relief, and I understand the time constraint, but at the same time, it's a lot. And I, you know, for our first unified review, I'd feel more comfortable having them come back with final. That's how I feel, but go ahead, Mike.
So when I'm looking at this rendering here, I'm looking at the, I guess this is the Equidene Avenue side with the, with the wall and the fence. And I'm not so sure I see the need for planters because I see this row of landscaping out in the front there. You know, there's bushes and stuff like that. To me, that, you know, that's sort of, what would you do? Put another set of planters there?
So they're looking for relief on the, on the west side, I'm sorry, the east side up against the flows. They need a 10-foot buffer there and they're only showing a five. So I, I'm inclined to grant the waiver, support the waiver on the look at the landscaping.
Oh, yeah.
You know, yeah. Oh, that's, that's.
That's on this side, right?
Yeah, this side. So, so I, I still think, that's how I feel, but I don't know. That's why don't we do this? Why don't we, I don't think there's any more discussion in my eyes relative to at least preliminary. So that, so then we, we can, we can close the public hearing and then discuss where we want to go.
Could I just comment on the, the parking?
Sure.
Aspect. Because I, I think all, all you're trying to do is, is tie these properties together. So you're, it's not really an agreement. It, it's, it's saying, all right, we've granted a variance here with understanding that, that those four spaces are used in common with the abutting property. It's all under the same ownership. So I think that's, that's a fairly easy condition and allows you the opportunity, if this was to be sold off, they gotta come, someone's gotta come back in here and solve that situation if they're gonna take it out of that common ownership and management, right?
Anything else?
And then, you know, I'm finally on the, on the landscaping, you know, situation. You know, I was just trying to provide, you know, a number to, to alleviate that. I'd hate to, you know, hang this up for another month just because of the amount of of planters, if, if we could have a further discussion, but.
Yeah, we want to close the public hearing? You have another comment?
Yeah, I, I still don't see the need for planters myself, because I'm looking, this is the flow side. There's a, there's a landscape plan there with all those bushes, you know, so why, why are we even talking about planters, you know, so?
A lot of testimony is, a lot of the relief being asked for is for landscape buffers and, and.
Well, they're there, right? That's, there's a buffer there along the flow.
There was a discussion on, on the, on the fire lane area, how we might be able to do something there. So that's how I feel. If you feel differently, that's fine, but if, you know, you, we can, we can talk about it, but I, I think we should close the public hearing and.
I move.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so.
Mr. Nash, I would, one thing I would report is, it might, there's an application to be heard after this and it might, I don't know if the board is inclined to also hear them, and I know they've been waiting for a while. It might make sense
Sorry, guys.
to let them know if they may be heard tonight, or if they may not be heard.
What is our policy, Ron, that we've had nine o'clock to not start an application? I mean, I, I don't know what's the board's pleasure. I mean, it's nine o'clock. We don't start something at nine o'clock. I mean, I don't know if we feel that's going to take.
Might take longer.
Or we can just wait and see. I just thought it might be good to let them know.
I'd prefer to wait and see. Thank you for, thank you for asking, though. So what's.
In regards to this, I, I obviously proceed on the planning board. I've been on the zoning board, but I, so I don't know the, this process, but I, my understanding is I guess we address the first and then, and then, and then the special use.
I think we need to address, are we going to entertain preliminary and final here tonight?
Oh, okay.
But I think maybe we can maybe get your opinion on each, and then ultimately if we find to to separate them, we probably need a motion to, to do so. So I guess we'll take a opinion discussion here on, what's our opinion on combining both preliminary and final?
I don't have a problem combining them this evening, but that's just my opinion.
I don't have a problem combining them this evening either. I think we're talking about parking. We're down to parking and planters. I can quantify both of those. I'm, I'm comfortable on parking, given what Charlie described and, and Mr. Martland. On the planters, I heard a 5% number thrown out there. And I can't sit here and calculate the patio area. I wish I could, but you know, maybe if the patio area increases in size based on square footage, maybe that number goes up a little bit, or, you know, maybe there's a little bit of movement there. But it would be enough to get me to move forward on combining them right now.
Okay, we're combining.
Okay, I'm not, but that's, I've been overruled before. And that's fine, so. I know, right? No worries. So I, I still prefer that way, but we'll, we'll go with that. So before we do a motion, we're going to, we're going to entertain a motion for both preliminary and final, and I think some, you know, if I could support combining them, then I'd like the direction you, you spoke about with regards to planters. How about, how about the condition to, to get it back to the tree commission for a review? You know, I mean, not an approval, just a, a blessing to some degree. I mean, I, I don't know. I feel like there's a little bit of oversight in, in, in order there.
I think they, I think they weighed in really well prior to this.
I mean, call it 5%, call it what we want, but I mean, I guess something is going to be better than nothing, and at this point, I'm willing to compromise with that. So, so I think that, and, and the same with the, with the parking agreement. I still think there needs to be a condition somewhere along the lines of that, and then ultimately at final becomes an administrative approval. Is that right, Ron? Or, no, it isn't. We're approving, the condition would have to be.
They're asking for preliminary and final, so if you grant final tonight, then.
Well, the condition.
Subject to the conditions, right.
Excuse me, but I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry. The condition would obviously have to be reviewed by our solicitor when he looks, looks at the opinion to be sure that it's what was discussed. Is that fair?
It, it depends what the particular condition is you're referring to.
Referring to parking. Mr. Martin stated, made a statement how he would, how he would understand the agreement to stand, that they would be sharing the four spaces with the property next door.
That can be a condition that would just go in the decision itself.
Okay. Who writes the decision?
So typically the, and this is a new unified review. At the zoning board, the typical practice is to have the At the zoning board, the typical practice is to have the applicant, if they're given approval, write the decision. And that decision is reviewed uh by the town before it's filed and edited.
That's kind of what I was what I was saying, so you you would ultimately have to review it anyway.
Yeah, and and the planning practice is for the administrative staff to write the decision. So either way, it's it's being overseen.
Was there is there interest, is there interest uh here to to have a condition relative to parking?
Yeah.
Yes.
And planters?
Yes.
Also talked about a stone wall in place of the concrete wall in the front.
That's correct.
Well, uh, it's it's uh it's it's the uh that they use a a natural New England stone. Uh, surface, either uh some kind of. It can be, it can be a concrete behind it, but it's got to got to be New England stone veneer or uh and and stone on the top. Uh, so that it, you know, has the appearance and the and the beauty of a New England stone wall. Also, they they obviously they they take the any concerns of the tree commission. Part of a condition, I guess that is that. I bet I do, is that something?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's the TRC recommendation, TRC.
So they also, yeah, the TRC recommendations, yeah.
And I think part of the motion is that they they've met the standards for variance and special use and do we have to do this separately?
So. The best practice would be, from my perspective, to do the zoning relief first in its own motion. And it would be most advisable to divide those between the. Uh, regulatory variances and the special use permit. Um, it, you know, it's it's. Really, the best way to do it is to vote on each variant separately because you don't know what the vote is going to be before you take it, right? So you should go through the list and do all of the variances first. And then you should hear a motion on the special use permit, and then you should hear a motion on the minor land development.
Okay, that makes sense to me, so let's do this then. That's 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 good advice, Mike, thank you.
And that and that way, if there's a different vote count on certain of the motions. Uh, that will be recorded for the record.
Yes, so there's five variances here and one special use, or there's 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 four variances and one special use permit, so. Let's do that first. I'll read them in and we and then we can have a motion and we can have discussion, is that?
Yes, and I would I would do the variances before the special use um in particular.
Let's let's do that, then. You can, you folks ready to go for this?
Yep.
Do one second, though. I I you say four, I I see five, what's the, what is?
The first one is the special use.
The first one specials, okay.
So I so I'm looking for a motion to grant the variance from zoning ordinance, uh, six oh three, fourteen oh six. To allow a westerly side yard setback of ten feet and an easterly side yard setback of nine point nine feet with thirteen point seven feet is required. And lock coverage of thirty six point thirty seven percent with thirty two point seventy five percent is permitted.
Second.
There's a mo, I need a motion.
So moved.
A motion.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion?
It would be advisable to have a brief discussion on how the standard has been met if there is an inclination to approve it.
Okay. Question on.
On number two.
On item two.
I would say that this variance. Uh, is not excessive relate uh related to the uh uh size of the lot, it's undersized. And that. Granting the relief. Reasonable and afford for the fair enjoyment of the property.
What else? I too, I'll vote in favor of this. I believe they've met the standard for this and also make a note that I I believe that they've still within the five percent of. That they could could do a, could have done that administratively or under consent item, so I support that variance. That they've met the standard. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion, please for to grant a variance from section thirteen oh six. To provide eight parking spaces where twelve are required.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
Second.
Second by BJ. Discussion.
I think we have the discussion and and I I'm comfortable that um we can still accommodate the twelve required spaces. You know, with a shared arrangement. Uh, given the same ownership.
This is where we might consider putting the condition.
This, yeah, this would 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 have to include the parking condition as Mr. Martlin described. Which would be in the minutes of the meeting.
So maybe you can.
Amends the motion to grant with the condition that there be a provision for shared parking. Uh, for the four spaces.
Submitted to and reviewed by the town solicitor.
So let's let's put forth a motion that has the amended parking arrangement. That will require the condition. Of a document approved and um reviewed by the solicitor.
Want to make that motion?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
I'll say, we actually had the motion already, but.
All right.
Not that it matters, it does matter, though, so I think Charlie, you made the motion, right? So you initial motion to approve and we add the condition.
Well, yeah, but the 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 as far as. Making a revised motion. I'll lead, made the motion and I've seconded it. Is that correct?
I didn't catch what you said there. You can repeat it.
Uh, wha- what I was saying was, uh, the initial motion to revise. To revise this. Question was made by my colleague and I seconded that motion. Should be on the record.
Yes.
We have a motion and we have a second and it was stated in the condition, as Joe said, we're we're good with that. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. So item number four, which is variance request number three. I'm looking for a motion for a variance to to approve a variance, uh, request from section thirty oh two C one. To allow front yard parking where prohibited. For motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I believe I'm gonna support this uh request. I believe it is uh the. Irregular lot, the fact that it has two front two uh a frontage on 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 two sides. One that has would not have very, very good or probably would have no. Street access, uh, so due to the irregular shape of the lot. Uh, this is not an unreasonable request.
Any else?
Well, and I think that the front yard parking area being located on Equidnic Avenue is certainly going to be. Um, much easier ingress and egress than trying to get in off Equidnic Avenue, Purgatory, so I support it as well.
You said Equidnic Avenue, you mean Wave Avenue, right?
He meant.
I said, I said, getting in and off, in and out off of wave, it's gonna be a lot easier than getting in and out off Equidnic slash Purgatory. So I'm I'm in support of that being the front yard and allowing parking on that side.
Yeah, I know what you mean, I just wanted to clarify.
Any other discussion?
Sense.
I too, what the variance, I believe they've met the requirement as as testified and stated tonight. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, variance request number four. It's actually number four, it's number five in the book, but it's it's the fourth request.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
Okay, uh, so I I'm looking for a motion to approve the variance request from section thirty oh two E two. To allow landscape buffers of zero feet, two feet and four feet along the westerly, easterly. And northerly property lines respectively, where five feet is required.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
There's a second, discussion.
I think again, this is um. A reasonable um request. I don't find it to be terribly excessive. Uh, and it is um not uh surprising with the. Configuration of the lot, non-conforming lot, uh, it's got. Very difficult uh conditions to work within. And also. Once again, I'm not sure. Solicitor may suggest we want to add to this a condition of the five percent planters being added. Make a.
Part of the motion.
Well, that's part of my motion, okay, all right, so so including in that motion would be my. Condition uh that was uh offered uh by the petitioner regarding. Adding five percent uh additional planting based upon the square footage of. What is it?
The deck patio area.
Deck patio, okay.
And and reviewed by the tree commission?
Good.
Yes.
And reviewed by the tree commission.
And is, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any further, there any further?
Yeah, well, I think I think that adequately. Makes up for the fact that there's a zero landscape buffer or two feet, you know, that the buffers uh don't conform to the five feet that's required. And I think that lands, that's that's a an effort to um mitigate some of those variances.
And I too support the variance based on the extensive discussion tonight on planters. Apologies for that, but it's important. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, so that clarifies the variance request, so now we're looking at special use permit. So I'm looking for a motion uh to approve the special use permit request. Per the zoning ordinance six oh two and fourteen hundred to allow a hotel hotel motel. In the limited business, traffic sensitive and Atlantic Beach overlay district zoning district.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion?
Uh, same thing, I'm I'm gonna support this. Uh, I think that Mr. Hul had pointed out. Your oath uh with his professional background. That uh this uh petition would not. Effect the uh property values, create a nuisance to the neighborhood. Injure any appropriate other uses uh surround in the surrounding area. Um, or result in any hazardous hazardous conditions. Uh, so I think that it's uh it 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 meets all the. Requirements for special use and I'll be supporting it.
Else? I I too agree, I think he's they've met the standard for a special use permit. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries, okay. Special use is done, zoning variances are done. My only question on all this is, uh, we still have the, we now have the the development plan review application.
The land development.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, uh, correct, uh, and then we can, the only thing that we've left out here is the stone wall, that can be done in this.
Well, you've got three conditions recommended by the technical committee and then the additional condition of the stone wall veneer. On that um Equidnic Avenue frontage.
Okay, good, so uh I think you, did you all listen to Ron's uh discuss statement on that? So I'm looking, we need a mo, so let me do, let me read this, and I'm sorry, a lot going on here, folks. Um, so a motion to. Uh, to grant both preliminary and final. Plan approval for the minor land development project as stated in the notice. With the conditions, but let's do.
The three conditions recommended by the TRC.
Recommendations by TRC.
Yeah.
Guarding the stone wall.
Uh, the the that the requested waivers, so all.
That's right, waivers as well.
Grant all the waivers.
And finally, the the required findings for a land development project.
And it meets the findings and and we add the stone wall as a condition under. As Charlie stated with the natural stone, okay, so somebody needs to make that motion as stated.
So moved, as stated.
If a motion, we have a second. Discussion. Uh, I I mean, I I mean, I'm gonna support the application, we've come this far with it, I, you know, I'm gonna apologize for the time it took, but this is a complicated application. And it is our first unified application, but I support it, I believe they've met the standards despite the fact, and I think we've done a good job of getting the. Both the parking and the planters addressed. Uh, I'm satisfied with that, although I wish it would have been final, but I'm comfortable with the rest of the board, so I I will support the application. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Marlin, if you could submit a draft decision to my office. Excellent, thank you.
So uh, next item on our agenda, folks, is, you know, it's it's not quite nine, and I guess in two seconds it will be, but, you know. You know, I know our policy is nine o'clock, you know, they they. I mean, I'm I'm inclined to stay, I've prepared for the application, but um, you know, it's it's the board's decision, but I, you know, I I'm gonna. Go out on a limb and say I think we should hear it, but I'll.
But I'll leave it up to the rest of the board, I'm sure that. I'll have to be in favor here.
I can go either way, I mean, I'm.
No, I'm not gonna stay.
No? Let's go.
So BJ, I mean, respectfully, if you feel you need to go, we still have a quorum, right?
Okay. Right.
Like I, I think we need, I I feel we need to stay, so I'm I'm gonna call the next application and BJ, if you need to excuse them. I don't mind at all.
I'm still recovering.
Understood, understood. Yeah, so let, I'm I'm let me, let me, unless you have a comment, you want to, I'll I'll read it into the record, or do you want to, do you have a statement?
Well, I I want to make sure I'm understanding what's happening here. You want to proceed tonight?
Oh, I I.
Had a three hour hearing on, uh, you know, a complicated matter, and I think we have similar a number of variances and uh waivers. I'm happy to start, look, I I will go with whatever the board wants to do. I also just note that if we get an hour into this and we need to come back. You know, we're kind of stuck with you four uh as our quorum.
That's a good point.
I've got a little concern about that because if we come back next month, I'm gonna full.
So I think we're willing to sit here, but if you're looking for uh continuums, then I'm I'm sure.
I'm just concerned because if next month we have three, but for some reason, one of you four can't be here, we're in a jam.
That's a good point, yeah.
Well, that's, so again, Gerard, that's your your request, if you want to request.
I I just think that it makes, I I don't envision us getting, you know.
I think I think what I think what uh Gerard is saying is if he starts tonight, he'd like to finish tonight. And and that would take a long time.
Uh, well, it and maybe it won't, but we have to work through a number of things, just like the last application.
That's fair. All right, so. So I I guess I'll entertain a motion by the board.
I said we put it off the next.
Uh, yeah, I I.
Let me do this, let me read it into the record and then we can have discussion and then we can table, we can we can table it to the next meeting, this. So, because it is on the agenda, we should read it in.
Can't start it, because then you'll be you'll be stuck with you.
All right.
Yeah, I I think I think for practical reasons, uh, I would make the request that we continue the matter to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you for that, so so we have a request from the applicant to continue to the next meeting. Uh, what's the board's pleasure?
Yeah, I would make a motion to continue it to the next.
Second.
Motion to continue to the next meeting, uh, item six. See, uh, motion has been made and seconded to continue to the next regular meeting, uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We tried, sorry, guys.
No, no, it's, you know. Hey, you, it's a tough job.
Sorry, no, sorry. Unified applications. Sorry, no, sorry. Unified applications is gonna be a, a doozy for us, I think. I know, I know that. I know that, you know, I can wrap that tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You need to adjourn before you lose your quorum.
Yeah, yeah.
But we still have a-
So we do have all the items. Let's, uh, move to table those, uh, the remainder of the agenda to the next meeting. Is there a motion to table the rest of the agenda to the next meeting?
For me.
But this, uh-
Back in.
That's the, uh, the update, just the update things and close that off.
Vote on that.
Sorry?
A vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. To table everything, right?
But Mike wants to talk about it now.
Oh, you'd like to talk about it now? Oh, that's fine, yeah.
Well, it's just that last update part, right? That's all we have to discuss and finish that off, right?
All right, so let's, uh, let's do this. Let's go through the updates. Charlie, we're gonna just go quickly go through the updates.
No, 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 it's fine.
Um, so, uh, item seven A, status report on planning board action items. Did, any comment on that? Pull my agenda up again. Sorry, guys. Right. So yeah, so, uh, we have a, uh, planning, anybody, any update? Any board, any, any comments around on this?
I have no comments. You have the memo.
We have the memo, yes. Has everybody reviewed? Mike, anything that you stands out to you?
No.
These are the same that we've had, and, you know, I honestly haven't reviewed this, so I'm okay with, with no discussion, but I'll let you all.
We have our comprehensive plan update committee meeting tomorrow, right?
We have a update meeting tomorrow.
That's correct. That's coming. That's, that's coming. I don't have any comments on these items. Is anybody else?
No.
No. Okay. Mike?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, good. So, uh, item seven B, committee reports. Comprehensive plan update committee. We meet tomorrow night. Question on that, Ron. Um, Paul? Is he on or off?
Only planning board members that are now appointed to committee, so the two new planning board members are now members of the, of that committee. Paul is not a member of the committee. Is there room for, uh, another citizen to have him come in as a citizen, uh? There, there isn't a vacancy for a public member. Okay. There were a vacancy for a public member. He could apply for that. He's, as any other member of the public, he's welcome to come to the meetings. Couldn't be sitting as a committee member.
Okay, so both, um-
I won't be around till the twenty second, so I won't be here tomorrow.
But you're on the committee officially, and so is Joe.
And it has his job, yeah.
And they'll start getting information as they would, uh, everybody else.
Already have gotten information.
Okay, good.
I think we gotta find a way to get Paul on a committee because he's a valuable, he's got obviously valuable insight, you know, you know, and putting together a good plan.
I don't disagree with that, but it's, um, it's all in the, it's all in the, the legal writings, I guess. Um, meeting tomorrow night. Tree commission. BJ has left. We have no, anything to report? Anybody? Nothing. Um, open space and fields.
Uh, there was a presentation by, uh, uh, Melissa Welsh on the, on a boardwalk, uh, concept for the, uh, Atlantic Bus, uh, uh, Business District on the pond side. Uh, so I guess that's something that's been discussed, and, uh, it's gonna have a, and, and, I don't know, I'm not sure what the, what the group is that's proposing it, but, uh, it's some way of tying that Atlantic Business District, you know, through bike paths and pedestrian walkways and things like that, through other parts of the town. And that, that was gonna be an integral part of it, so looked like an interesting concept. I don't know where I'll go with it, but-
Presented to the council before, I believe. There was some discussion on that, if I remember right.
Okay.
Okay.
And they're looking for a member, they're looking for volunteers to, at, for the Albra Woods, uh, you know, uh, project that they're working on too, so.
Okay, okay. Um, conservation commission. Uh, Leana, Leana is not here. You were, were you on that before?
Yeah, we never met, we never met, though, when I was on it.
Well, are there any committees that Paul and/or? Oh, Paul's the only one. Or, or John, are there, were they on committees that we need to push them to? Nothing outstanding up there. Okay, upcoming meetings, April eleventh, tomorrow night. Uh, the comprehensive plan, and May eighth, our regular meeting, where we will have our elections, assuming we'll have a full board. At this point, we'll see if anybody else wants to be chair. Uh, okay.
Party scared away one night, I bet.
Not at all. It's a lot of, it's, it's, that's a lot of really, the unified plan review is a lot, folks, right? I mean, it's a lot, but it's, it's important. So, uh, we looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Back in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. All right. Sorry, folks.